Neither woman intimated that.
Very good in that case.
I don't say it if it's true, he's got training wheels on his bicycle.
He's got training wheels.
The certification group takes a while, it's like the Diplomate or any other advanced program like that.
Okay, so we want to move the resolutions a little bit.
How will the land use development for the two families in PLO?
Second matter.
As a follow-up, I did meet with the planning board, or I did attend the planning board meeting last week and two weeks prior, and discussed this, and they're in favor of it.
Wait a minute.
Oh, wait, yes. And we just tried to make it more difficult than we knew it was. Okay, someone like, oh, let's move to second. Local, please.
Chairman Adair?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Kepanis?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Budansky?
Yes.
Mr. Flores?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Okay, next item, land use. It's all over the age, it's fun as hell. Land use, Eastern Avenue.
We didn't do the temporary zone officer.
I thought we did that one.
That one we moved it.
Oh, so we.
We didn't move that one.
No.
And I hope you don't, if you would move both of them out.
Okay, let's move, someone like, move it?
Oh, yes, I'll move it.
I'll second.
Okay, move the second, resolution for the temporary real officer. Uh, any discussion? Local?
Chairman Adair?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Kepanis?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Budansky?
Yes.
Mr. Flores? Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Okay. Land use witness, only land use applications. First one is sensitive. Route 206. Route 206?
One, one, go.
Yeah, there's no going to land holdings, all.
Which one? Oh, Route 206, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about application. Good evening, is this where you're letting me stand?
There should be a chair.
There should be a chair.
There, I think our Jack of Cent, so I can find the chair, but that is so. I'm not gonna stand.
Chair, they want, we got a chair.
Now it's hard.
Yes, good evening. Good evening, Tiana Caponi from McManaman Scotland and Mountain, good evening, everybody, representing the applicant, 1L Somerville Land Holdings LLC. Uh, I will be presenting the application tonight. Uh, Jack Larkin, general counsel with Catalyst Experiential, an affiliate of the applicant, will also be presenting the application with me. Uh, just a minor administrative matter, I want to confirm with your board attorney that the notice was published and mailed to everyone on the 200-foot list. It's of importance for the need of the land use law and the Somerville requirements. Therefore, the board has, the board has your intention to have, uh, hear the application. I have the signs have been even here, I will hand it to.
You give that to the board secretary?
Your board secretary. Um, we do not have the original from the newspaper yet, but we will submit that as soon as it's received. Apparently, it was mailed to us from Wisconsin, and if you just, yeah, yes. We have not received it in the mail yet.
Local paper.
Yeah, yeah, uh, who knows why our New Jersey publication is being mailed from Wisconsin, but that's apparently how it goes. Um, so, uh, application tonight is number 22 dash zero two, 22C. The applicant is 1L Somerville Land Holdings LLC. The property is located at 1US 206, and identified on the official tax maps, the borough is block 123, lot 11.01. It's an approximately three-acre triangular-shaped parcel in the I-1 industrial district with an existing healthcare facility use. The applicant seeks preliminary and final site plan approval with variances to construct a monument display sign to be constructed in the front yard of the property. The applicant has entered into a lease with the property owner permitting the construction, operation, and maintenance of the display sign. We actually have an exciting project to show you tonight. The monument was designed through a collaboration with borough officials, and certain safety and security features were fine-tuned as a result of a very productive meeting with Mr. Cole. Not only will our proposal provide an attractive monument with architectural nods to the borough's historical train station, but the applicant is providing the borough with valuable advertising space on the sign itself. All of these details and more will be explained in what I am sure will, you will find to be a thorough but succinct presentation. Testifying tonight, we have four witnesses. Tia Steinhardt, vice president of development for Catalyst Experiential, again, an affiliate of the applicant. Todd Hay, art engineer from Panoni. Matthew Sekler, art traffic engineer with Stonefield. Matt, uh, Goldus Byer, our professional planner with Topology. Uh, we have received two reports, uh, one dated February 2023 from the Somerset County Planning Board, and they have specified that the project does not require planning board approval. And then our April 27, 2023 report from Michael Cole, the board's engineer and planner, who will be addressing that one throughout the testimony tonight. If the board doesn't have any questions or comments from me, I will bring this Steinhardt up to get our testimony. I'll bring him. Okay, that sounds fine to me.
You a place to sit, Mr. Paul? I, yeah, I don't.
I, I have a place to sit.
I think as the attorney, you're entitled to have a place to sit.
Yes, I have a place to sit, and Steinhardt is going to stand. She's gonna stand to present, she has a presentation that she's going to.
All right, so as long as that's all right, that's fine.
Yeah.
Watch that letter, right, careful.
Yes, she will.
Stand behind it.
Uh, we should be so kind as to raise your right hand. You saw this word, the testimony you're about to give, and this letter will be the truth, so I hope you got it.
Yes, sir.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Absolutely, my name is Tia Steinhardt, last name S-T-E-I-N-H-A-R-D-T.
Very good, Mr. Paul, your witness?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Aaron, please give your business address for the record, please.
Yeah, so our business address is 3400 West Chester Pike, Newtown Square, Pennsylvania.
And whom are you employed?
Uh, I'm employed by Catalyst Experiential.
And they are affiliate of the applicant tonight, right?
Yes.
And how long have you been employed by them?
I joined Catalyst in September of 2022.
Okay, great, and what's your current title with them?
I serve as Catalyst Vice President of Development, specifically in our New Jersey market.
And what's the nature of your employment, what do you do with them?
Absolutely, so Catalyst, uh, works in, in public-private partnerships with municipalities, and my job as their Vice President of Development is to serve as a representative of Catalyst with the municipality. And I will see our projects grew from the initial stage of introduction, introducing the idea and concept to a municipality, the professionals and elected officials, through to when we make applications coming in front of the zoning board or planning board, depending on the application, and testifying on behalf of the company relative to our proposed project.
Which brings us to tonight and your presentation.
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. So firstly, I would like to thank each member of the board and the board professionals for the opportunity to come in front of you this evening. I plan to cover the following four key categories in tonight's testimony, so a brief overview of our company, our product portfolio, uh, the functionality of our designs, if, uh, the overall community benefits associated with our projects, and lastly, the specific location and custom design we created for our proposed project here in Somerville. So there are six key tenants that differentiate and define what Catalyst Experiential does in the outdoor communication space. Firstly, we have redefined the physical form of communication in the built environment. So we design, develop, and construct landmarks, experiences, and infrastructure that meet community needs. All of our projects are developed in affluent areas surrounding major metropolitan markets. Now, we are the only company in our sector that creates solutions to outdoor advertising that address aesthetics, and all of our projects involve a high level of municipal collaboration and come at absolutely no cost to taxpayers. So you can truly sum up what we do as quality over quantity. Now, we have three types of products in our portfolio. So infrastructure includes municipal infrastructure pieces like EMS facilities or local parking facilities, um, the types of structures that enable municipal leaders to best serve their communities, and we build these structures from the ground up and integrate visual communication technology into them. Experiences are the types of amenities and attractions that make communities unique and interesting. So we integrate visual communication technology into everything from dog parks to farmers' markets or arts and cultural centers, and these products work on, uh, surface-level roadways with posted speed limits of 25 to 55 miles per hour. And lastly, and most relevant to our conversation this evening, is landmarks. Landmarks make up the overwhelming majority of our portfolio. They take on two forms, clock towers and monuments, and are designed to reinforce community identity while operating as a multifaceted communications platform that provides a way to communicate directly with both residents and visitors. And they work on both surface-level and limited-access roadways with posted speed limits of 25 to 65 miles per hour. Now, to touch on our sustainability efforts just a bit, while most land development projects result in less green space here at Catalyst, we choose to enhance it. So 2D throughout our projects, we have planted 256 trees greater than 20 feet tall and over 45,800 plants as part of our installations. We've also installed over 21,000 plants in a living wall configuration and have restored over 173,000 square feet of concrete back into green space. Um, so I'd like to show you, just to provide a better visual understanding of our projects, a video, James, if you wouldn't mind pulling up, and this is just going to be a video of some of our existing installations that were part of this exhibit.
That was what, so I ask, this material was, was provided prior to the meeting, you know, within the 10-day rule, if you would.
This was provided, yes, this was provided to Jenna, um, in advance of the meeting. Are we including all this on the contract? Yes, it was all.
We will also opt on the contract.
It was provided to Jenna.
Okay, I know I had emailed you about, but I just want to put that on.
Sure, right.
Okay.
I don't know.
So this first landmark installation was specifically created with the intent of directing travelers to Quaker Town's recently revitalized Main Street. And to do so, they wanted a design that, in its physical form, established a sense of direction. So we created the compass. Uh, this installation features various elements of an old-fashioned compass and was constructed with the same brick that was used in the Main Street revitalization. Uh, and of course, you can't have the compass without a compass rose, so we were sure to include one in this installation.
I don't want to interrupt, uh.
I'm not sure that this was provided to.
My board secretary tells me it was not, so it should be marked.
We need to mark it as a, as a, yes, I think you're correct, yes.
All right.
Correct, perfect, thank you. Yes, I don't, I, after saying that, I think this was not correct.
And Tiana, everything is included on the USB that I have for Jenna.
Okay.
For the presentation.
Yes, so we should mark this, save the.
Okay, well, okay, but this will be, all right, you'll be introducing this now, and it'll be considered as received now.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, you know, anything subsequent, obviously, we want you to, uh, you know, please keep, you know, be cognizant of the NLUL 10-day requirement.
Yes, yeah, this is a new exhibit that should be marked, correct? From today's date, yes.
That's, all right. You can proceed.
Um, now, this is a landmark installation in Concord Township where we took an underutilized and overgrown parcel, um, and converted it into a, sorry, uh, I converted it into a gateway monument for Concord's business district. So we took advantage of the topography of this parcel and constructed a reflection pool with synchronized fountains. The monument display itself featured brick and stone elements, custom arch venting, and programmable architectural lighting with a municipal identification proudly situated at the top. This particular installation in Middletown, Pennsylvania, was constructed using three-dimensional letters M and T to represent Middletown Township, and we used one of three digital displays for the horizontal configuration of the T. Uh, uniquely, this installation was internally illuminated, and that internal illumination feature could be programmed at the township's discretion to change color according to the municipality's wishes. This is an example of a vertical clock tower installation we did in West Conde Hocken, Pennsylvania, which is a riverfront town that's known for four waterfalls that flow into the region, and actually, you can see on the building in the back called Four Falls, indicative of that aspect of the community. So we wanted to capture the essence of this community in our installation, uh, and we installed a living, I'm sorry, a flowing wall of water associated with a living wall of plants to reflect that natural identity of the community. And lastly, this is an installation that we did in Hilltown, Pennsylvania, which featured curved displays, so a very non-traditional format for a digital display, and we wanted to carry that theme and that sheen into the base of the monument. So you'll see the curvature carried out throughout the base. Um, we included municipal identification, which at night, you'll see in a moment, uh, is backlit with bands of LED architectural lighting, also programmable to change colors at the municipality's discretion. Now, um, should we, so, water. It's important to highlight that the technology we're proposing is not standard digital sign technology, but rather a more advanced technology called light-blocking surface mount diodes, or light-blocking SMD. So standard digital sign technology consists of square and rectangular modules, which support groupings of red, green, and blue diodes, and each grouping of such is referred to as a pixel. Now, this type of technology is limited in resolution quality because those pixels can only be located so close together before the color begins to bleed onto other pixels. And in this technology, as you can see right here, the diodes actually protrude from the face of the module, and this creates a very wide viewing angle of 140 degrees. So the more advanced light-blocking SMD technology that we're proposing in this installation, is composed of individual white diodes that produce the same color palette as standard technology, but from a single point of light. So as a result, those pixels can be located much closer together, therefore creating a much higher resolution quality. And more importantly, in this technology, each diode is actually in taste in four custom angled louvers, which allows us to not only reduce the viewing angle, but to tailor the viewing angle to accommodate the specific site conditions surrounding the installation. As a result, we're able to focus the content of the display specifically to the roadway. So this is an aerial of our proposed project, uh, from the installation site, rather, here in Somerville. By utilizing light-blocking SMD technology and custom angling the louvers on each of the display faces, we're able to focus the content of the display specifically to the roadway from which it was intended to be viewed. So by pairing this technology with the custom angles we've selected, it ensures that anyone who's within the areas that you see here shaded in red will not be able to see any light or imagery coming from the display, and it doesn't matter whether, whether it's day or night. Um, when anyone is standing within those non-viewable zones, all they will be able to see is a black screen. Um, there's one other important element to mention, and that's measurable light. So when we talk about measurable light and how light is controlled on these installations, in each of our installations, we employ a unique device called a multi-directional light sensor, or MVLS. So this sensor is constantly monitoring the ambient light level and, of the display, and adjusting the brightness, so the display is always operating at 0.3 foot candles above ambient light level, which means that it's always operating at no more than 30% of the brightness of a candle that is one foot away from you, above the ambient light level. And this applies at any given time of day, throughout any weather conditions, to ensure that the display is always operating at a comfortably visible level without any wear. So the MVLS operating at this standard ensures that our installations can conform without issue to even the most stringent residential lighting standards. And while it doesn't particularly apply at this project, at this location, I think it's an important point to highlight, um, just as a testament to the capabilities of this technology. And to further that point, we have an existing installation that sits just seven feet from a residential property line and adheres to the standard set forth in their residential lighting ordinance. Now, from a regulatory perspective, our installations strictly abide by NJDOT state regulations, which means our signs convey only static images, which are shown for eight-second intervals, with each static image leading directly to the next. So there's no flashing, there's no movement, no animation, in fact, our hardware is not even capable of displaying motion videos. And to further that point, NJDOT's approval of our permit in this location signifies our compliance with their standards. So, um. Um, so as I mentioned, sorry. I feel like I'm missing a slide here. All right, we'll go right here. So our installations are designed to support municipal use of the platform, um, and this is at absolutely no cost to the municipality, and that includes the design of the municipality as well. So the municipality is guaranteed one eight-second slot every two minutes on each side of the display for the length of the installation's operational hours. So with 17 operational hours daily, that would equate to 510 municipal messages being displayed each day on each side of the installation, and it's up to the municipality how you would like to, how many ads you would like to have rotating throughout your time slots on any given day. So in addition to off-premises advertising, our installations are designed to support municipal, as I mentioned, municipal communications, emergency communications, and nonprofit communications. So municipal communications have historically come in a vast variety of different forms, but just to provide a few different examples, uh, first responders have used our installations for many things, whether it be fundraising, or recruiting, or even alerts to help find missing people. Um, most municipalities use our installations to promote general township information, so whether that be upcoming community events, or local town meetings, uh, or even to promote your upcoming restaurant. And lastly, school districts. Uh, we've done some very unique campaigns with local school districts. One of the most interesting was a virtual art show that we did within the Chamonix School District, in which teachers would actually pick students' artwork to be showcased on our installations, and that was really neat, because we'd get pictures from parents of their kids standing under our installations with a smile from ear to ear as this larger-than-life impression of their artwork was being displayed above them. Um, all of our displays also broadcast emergency messages from the FBI, FEMA, and the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children, and these alerts run approximately once every minute while the alert is active. And it's important to add also that with every alert, uh, that will override all other messaging on the display for the initial hour following alert, and that is all that will appear. Uh, and lastly, Catalyst makes its network available to local nonprofit organizations, which has allowed us to help various nonprofits with their general awareness campaigns, uh, their fundraising efforts, and I do think it's truly effective. I even recently, um, rescued a pet from one of the nonprofits I salt advertised on one of our installations. So for each of our installations, we also enter into an operations and maintenance agreement with the municipality, and this agreement outlines standards for general operations, municipal communications, um, and maintenance. So amongst other features, the O&amp;M agreement includes an annual maintenance schedule, and it also sets forth a list of prohibited advertisers. We also give the municipality the right to deny any type of advertisement that it finds at its sole discretion to be objectionable. And beyond that, if there's an advertisement that is seen on the display that the municipality has found to be in poor taste, you can call us and require us to remove it, and we will, though I'm happy to say that no municipality's ever had to make that call. So to go into the site specifics here for our installation, um, in order for monument displays to be effective communications platforms that they are intended to be, uh, they need to be located adjacent to roadways with sufficient vehicular traffic. So here in Somerville, uh, we're proposing the construction of a landmark installation along Route 206. Uh, the proposed location, as relative to the borough's geographic border, is indicated by the pushpin that you can see right here. Um, now, there are three additional points I'd like to highlight as to why we selected this location. Firstly, the proximity of this parcel to the borough's geographic border makes it the ideal location for a gateway monument into the borough of Somerville. Second, it serves as a communication platform that reaches motorists before they enter the borough's historic district, and thirdly, because the vast majority of our advertisers come from local and regional businesses, um, we felt that this was an appropriate location with a high possibility for a significant number of local businesses within the borough to see this as a true asset that would help direct travelers to their stores within the town. So now, just to cover a few of the specifics related to this parcel, the address is 1US 206, it sits at the intersection of Route 206 and South Bridge Street, um, and it's owned I-1 for the industrial district. The parcel is 3.08 acres, and it has approximately 550 feet of frontage along Route 206, and the pushpin here indicates that our proposed installation is at the southwestern corner of this site. Now, the site is currently access ground of the existing medical arts office complex, uh, so we would be proposing to, uh, just an attractive additional use at this site. Now, from a design perspective, we participated in numerous meetings with township professional, I'm sorry, with borough professionals and elected representatives, uh, and were given the directive to take inspiration from Somerville's historic train station. So as I begin to walk through the design elements of the, the custom design that we created, uh, in collaboration with borough representatives, I'll point out many of the same building elements shown here in this picture of Somerville's recently revitalized, uh, and always historic train station. So before, um, James is going to pull up another video, which, do you want to count this as a exhibit?
I think the entire slideshow was facilitating one.
The entire package contains.
Great, okay. Okay, so I'll let you know. Oh, is this a separate, is this a separate file?
No, well, it's, it's a, it's a video which we just can't link you to size, because it won't.
Oh, okay, so this is a separate, this is a separate file, I don't know if you want to mark this separately. A2?
All right, let's make this A2, of course. I've got a similar matter in Martin County where I, you know, there are limitations, so I'd better, better be safe.
Sorry, okay.
Um, so as I mentioned, um, our approach to the Somerville monument design was highly collaborative. We created several designs and met with municipal staff and, uh, elected representatives throughout several meetings, um, throughout a series of meetings that spanned several months.
Just, I'm, I'm, just wait for one second.
Uh, I want to make sure, could you, could you again describe what this A2 is?
So A2, A2 is going to be an Illumian animation rendering, a video of the monument design.
Very good, I just want to moderate your speed just a little bit, because I know, God, I'm the same way, but I, we want, we've got, you know, you've got evidence to bring in, and I want to make sure the board is all comfortable and cognizant of everything you're discussing.
Understood, thank you. And, and so, you know, we have these on a USB that we will give to you, so you have, you'll have these.
So, um, following those meetings and the design directive from, uh, the mayor and municipal staff, we created a monument design that pays respect to the historical character of Somerville by incorporating building elements that can be seen today at Somerville's historic train station. So if you wouldn't mind? The monument design begins was shown to match the Victorian-style train station with, was originally constructed in the 1800s. So starting at the base of the monument, we created airspace by implementing three archways that follow the curvature found on the lower-level windows of the train station. The airspaces are accentuated by planter beds that align with solid areas of the monument display, and include plantings of blue fescue, purple trion, and blue bedge. To establish a sense of symmetry, we created two tunnelways that run perpendicular to the heart of the monument, and were designed to be emblematic of train station platforms. We integrate traditional lanterns, uh, and design the triangle. We integrate traditional lanterns and design the triangular roof with the colonial white siding and dark red molding to match the same lower roofline of the Somerville train station. Along the rooflines, you'll notice cut metal silhouettes of two trains. So as we pan back around, you'll see that the first is a silhouette of the original single-engine locomotive that helped lay the tracks through Somerville. And the second is of a modern locomotive. And it's intended to reflect the progress that Somerville has seen since the train station was first constructed. Now, above the archways, above the archways is a thick horizontal trim that runs the width of the monument in the same dark red color I mentioned earlier. The visual communication technology is designed in a non-traditional configuration to support the Somerville identification in dark bronze halo-lit letters above the display and the wording established 1909 in the same style below the display. Now, the Victorian trim continues with the corbel details at the top of the monument. These corbels match the same supports that can be seen on the second story of the Somerville, of Somerville's historic train station. Uh, the monument is complete with a traditional Victorian roofline coming to the center with a decorative, uh, weather vane that indicates the points of a compass. And at night, to accentuate select design elements, we have the municipal identification, which, as I mentioned, would be halo-lit with RGB LEDs. Um, there would be four ground map fixtures on each side of the monument, providing an architectural light wash over the dome. The two platform areas would be illuminated from above, and the lanterns would have traditional warm white bulbs. And lastly, to specifically address comments received, uh, from Mr. Poe, we've included an ornate black fence around the entirety of the installation, particularly to prevent wildlife from entering the tunnelways. So if you'd like for me to play through again, you can play through. Yes, it is. I'm happy to provide some further details on the building materials. We've also brought with us, um, a traditional materials board, which, um... Jeff, would you please step right up?
The depictions of the building materials collectively name three in Evans.
Okay. Would you go to the slide that has the building materials also? Where would you like the display?
I don't know. Actual TV screen.
Do you want to lean it up a little bit here so you...
We are on.
I can, I can hold that.
Yeah. Over there, please.
Over here? You are, you got it.
Wait, TV.
She did it, you used to.
All right, so we'll have a kind of a combination between the screens of the, the building materials that we're looking at. So, um, the stone that you see, but on the, uh, the board and pictured on the screen, is Eldorado Stone Sierra Cut 24. And it was specifically selected to match that of Somerville's train station. We have Dove Gray asphalt shingles, which will be installed on the roofs. The cedar impressions scallop-cut colonial white siding will be used on the triangular rooflines above the tunnelways, and it's a polymer vinyl siding with the texture of real shingles, uh, which I think will be more evident by what's on the, the board here. Both the Somerville identification and establishment date will appear in a Rockwell font. And those letters are our halo lit, which essentially means that they're, they're backlit, just to provide, uh, an initial access on the identification. The dry fit color 310 China White will be applied to the inside of the airspaces with freestyle finished stucco as seen here. Um, the ornamental fencing is power-coated black aluminum with square jute coats. Uh, and the paint colors are shown on the board as you can see down there. So the white satin, well, sorry, yeah, the white satin, uh, satin white will be used for the, the corbel accents, which mimics that, what you see at the actual train station. Um, the black satin will be used for the train silhouettes and also for the weather vane at the top of the monument's slide. The, well, all the way to get there, your Durotic Dark Bronze Number 313 is what we'll use for the channel letters. And then lastly, your dark red is what we use for the molding and trim, uh, as well as the columns of the tunnelways. And that color is Pantone 1817C. So if you have any questions about the building materials, I'm happy to answer them. Uh, but generally speaking, just thank you for your time and attention to the presentation. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions. And we also have our three experts who are here to provide some more details on the end of the area.
Anyone from the board have any questions on this slide? Anyone from the audience have any questions?
All right, well, thanks so very much.
Thank you.
Counsel, your witnesses be remaining throughout the presentation?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess, I think they'll talk you.
Leave this, so anyone wants to take a peek during the testimony? And also going on a camera?
Oh, no. Members of the ears and the public are of course invited to take a look at this. And if you want to get a little closer to the screen, please, you know, come up a little closer.
Okay, that's all we, oh, yes. Oh.
So there are two screens, one on either side?
Correct, yes, sir.
And Somerville gets, uh, when you say one eight-second impression, it's two minutes. Does that mean one screen or both?
Both screens. Um, so you'll have one eight-second slot every two minutes, and that's on each display. And the displays don't necessarily showcase the same exact, you know, custom at the same time, they may run on different cycles. Um, but all of our installations on surface-level roadga, roadways are programmed to operate for seventeen hours in a day. So that quite literally translates into five hundred and ten municipal ad slots rotating throughout the day. Um, and we will provide the municipality essentially with a how-to manual of how to go through and submit an ad request. Um, but in that same community communications portal, the township can provide, the borough can provide, uh, or decide how many ads you'd like to have rotating throughout the day. So if you want to break it down into one particular ad in the AM, another in the PM, afternoon, you can do that. However you'd like to do it, um, you have those ad slots to work with throughout the whole day.
And, uh, during those seven hours where the sign does not operate?
It'll just be black. So it's the same thing, so like with the technology that I, I explained, um, with the light-blocking technology. When you're within that non-viewable zone, you just see a black screen as you pan around. You don't see any light emanating from the display. And it'll be the same thing. But what you will still see, uh, at night when the display is off is the accent lighting on the installation, which will be, is dimmable. But it'll just be accentuating the municipal identification. So you'll still see the halo of letters that say Somerville and establish 1909 and the very soft lighting of the lanterns or, um, the accent lighting pointing up at the display to emphasize the stone wash.
Anyone else have questions?
Hello, hello, yeah. I'm Mill Peabody, 45 reader. Uh, what's the height?
Height, okay, so the, oh, you're through it. So the VCT itself is...
Height of the thing, and the height of the board itself and what's...
Sure. So the height of the VCT itself is going to be eighteen feet. And that starts, so from the bottom of the VCT to the ground, is eleven feet and two inches. And then from the top of the VCT, you have the municipal identification and the roof. Uh, so when you take into consideration everything from the ground to the roof up, uh, you're looking at a total height of just forty-one feet.
And the board itself though, and area?
The board itself and area, so would you pull back a picture of the display so I can explain? So the true VCT space, uh, is only going to be six hundred and eighty-one feet. So if you look at what you're seeing here, that's the, the square footage, uh, I'm sorry, it's thirty-one square feet, is what you're looking at as the digital. Now, the VCT is otherwise, is otherwise eighteen feet in height, as I said, and forty-eight feet wide. So that standard rectangle is a total of eight hundred and sixty-four square feet. But the true VCT size, because you see that we have cutouts going into the rectangle, is only going to be six hundred and eighty-one square feet. Absolutely.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I will, um, ask my colleague, Jeff Larkin, to come up, and he's going to be, uh, taking you through our engineer, Todd Hayes, testimony next.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the courtesy of letting me appear today. I didn't want to get out of the office every once in a while. Please, raise your right hand. Um, I'm happy to, but I'm in general care, so I think it's a mystery. Hey, did you want to?
It's all right, very good, all right, very good. Just want to make sure we have the test of course. Go out to the square and win. He even know I didn't pay him.
Technically, when I said they let me out of the office every once in a while, I thought it was like...
He's not getting out tomorrow.
You saw me before the testimony you're about to give to this man. It'll be the truth, so I'll be glad.
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Todd M. Hay, H-A-Y, professional engineer. My address is 24 Commerce Street, Suite 300, R. New Jersey, 07102.
Thank you, Mr. Hay. Counsel, you're with us?
Mr. Hay, thank you very much for being here with us tonight. Um, you told us your name, you told us where you're working, how are you currently employed? Uh, I'm currently employed at Canoni. I'm Regional Vice President, uh, for the firm, uh, based in Newark, New Jersey. And I've been licensed as an engineer for approximately twenty-five years. I've been in the industry for thirty-one years. Uh, testified before 200 to 300 plenty of zoning boards over the years in New Jersey alone. I've represented several communities, one of which I've represented now eighteen years and two months.
So you basically scooped most of my questions.
Miss one, which was, I know you've testified in front of ZBAs in the past, but have you ever been accepted as a expert witness?
Absolutely, been accepted as an expert witness at least two hundred times.
Were they in some municipalities?
Uh, yes, some municipalities. Here in Somerset County, I've been testified before Marangeford Township, I've testified before Hillsborough Township, I've testified for Bridgewater Township on numerous occasions, and then Mr. Township, Warren Township, Watchon Township. I was just in Watchon last week. Did all of yours.
Uh, I'm hoping that we can add this effort to the list and move to qualify what's next.
Please step in.
Mr. Hay, have you had the opportunity to review the site plans for this project?
Yes, I have. I have also supervised and prepared them, and my name is fixed.
Can you give us some background about the property and the project that's proposed?
The property is located at Block 123, Lot 11.01. It is a former medical arts building. It is the southernmost property off of the township next to the River. Um, it lies alongside the corner of Route 206 North and South Bridge Street on the southbound lane.
James has hopefully called up for us an image of the site plan that you see on the board?
Yes.
Uh, tell us about the project that's proposed.
Well, essentially, what the project entails is it is the installation of a monument sign. That installation of monument sign will occur right at the corner of, uh, the property. Uh, if you look at the frontage of the property on South Bridge Street, the sign will be located approximately thirty feet off of the right-of-way. So keep in mind, the property has to be triangular shaped. Um, it is a polygon, but the closest distance to that right-of-way is thirty feet. On the northbound side of Route 206, it'll be approximately twenty feet. Um, that location of the sign was picked specifically so that the view shadowed the sign, both with the VCT facing to the north and VCT facing to the south is ideal for this installation. You'll also notice that there are a number of different call-outs in the plan talking about some of the replacements that will occur with the construction of the sign. Whenever you put a sign this size in, and to give you a kind of an understanding of it, if you look at, um, the plans in your packet, you'll notice that there happens to be a, uh, location of the sign in terms of a footprint of approximately ninety-nine and a half feet by forty-one and a half feet. Uh, that's simply under about forty-one hundred square foot. And as was mentioned before with prior witness, um, you'll probably notice that the height happens to be just under forty-one and a half feet, um, in terms of height. Uh, when you look at, uh, the replacement of certain elements within the site, the only replacement will be with construction of this magnitude, which is simply under eight thousand square foot of disturbance, you will have to most likely replace curving, and you'll have to replace also pavement when you go ahead and you construct the foundation, and you also clear the site in terms of removing topsoil and seed and then replacing it with topsoil and seed, as well as other site elements such as landis paving and so on.
Now, on your plan, I know that there are seven variances in total, three D variances and four C variances. Is that correct?
That is correct. That has been reflected on our plans.
I'd like to walk through those variances. I'll ask you about the variance, and I'll just ask you to explain why it's necessary in this case. First, a variance from Borough Code Section 102-117A sub 1, which provides that Hill Lot shall contain more than one principal building or structure.
That is correct, yes. This mon, this monument sign, and it's not really a sign to me because I testified with billboards, signs, and also monuments. This is a monument sign, and therefore it is being considered as a principal structure. Therefore, there are two principal structures.
Um, could we build on this site without that variance? There's already another structure that exists there. This is a principal structure you need.
That is correct. There is a medical arts building that is located right in the center of the triangular-shaped property.
Second, among the D variances, a variance from Borough Code Section 102-119A sub 1 sub sub H, which prohibits signs that advertise products or services not present on the site. What do you mean that?
Well, basically, you have a freestanding sign that's, uh, that's located now on the property, and now they're being proposed too, and that's therefore the variance. You can only restrict it to one.
Understood, okay. Well, this particular variance is requesting a variance off of the requirement that you not advertise products or services that are not present on the site. So this is off-site application.
Yeah, sorry about that. I thought you were referring to 119A, but 119F, yes, that is correct.
Next, we need a variance from Borough Code Section 102, um, 119, 119, which limits the height of freestanding signs to thirty feet. They're asking for forty-one point one, right?
That is correct, yes.
And if this were just thirty feet tall, then, I mean, one of the purposes of the monument is obviously to display content. It's visible from the road. It would no longer be an effective advertising device if it were only those things.
That, that is correct. And it would still be subjected to, uh, any type of approval with the zoning board if it exceeded ten percent of that height that was listed in the ordinance.
We can make it shorter, right, by cutting off some of the pieces of the, the decorative trim on top, the architectural pieces, the, um, uh, weather vane, right?
Well, the weather vane would not have applied to this. But what happened is, is that if you went ahead and took the gables of the roof and lowered it by approximately, let's say, eight or nine foot, and put a flat roof in, then yes, you would probably meet the requirement.
But it wouldn't then have the architectural distinction?
It would completely lose it.
That is correct. Want to move to the C variances? So there's a variance from Borough Code Section 102-119F, which permits one freestanding sign per lot. And there are two proposed here, that's the one you mentioned before.
Yes, correct.
So the other one is an enterprise sign, though. It's proposed, it's describing the, uh, the products or services that are advertised on the site.
That is correct.
So we're not going to have two different off-site signs?
No.
Just face signs. Next, a variance from Borough Code Section 102, 119F sub 2 sub B sub 2, which permits a display surface area of one hundred and thirty square feet. We're looking for six hundred and seventy-one square.
Right, that is correct. And as indicated before, the height of the sign, the VCT sign, or at least the perimeter, is eighteen feet by forty-eight feet. That's well beyond what is expected.
And it just wouldn't be an effective advertising device at a hundred and thirty square.
For a motion sign, no, it would not.
Not along the highway of this speed?
That's correct, yes.
And I want to be super clear, you said a motion sign. There's no part of this sign that's actually going to display animation. It's just, it changes from one item to the other.
That's, that is correct, yes.
Next, uh, variance from Borough Code Section 102, 119F to B sub 4, which requires a fifteen-foot setback from South Bridge Street right-of-way, more than supposed to be five.
Yes, and I mentioned before about the setbacks off of each of the right-of-way. At the very corner of the site, you'll notice that the corner of this site, the southernly corner, is approximately five feet away from the corner. That is because this lot is, uh, is shaped differently at the end of lot and not true to the right-of-way. If you were actually measuring it through the sidewalk area, it would be approximately more than fifteen to twenty feet.
Is there a reason why we couldn't just slide this north a little bit?
You could slide it north, but the issue is there are more trees. And there also happens to be an area that was used for drainage in that area with respect to the entire property. So that area is reserved, and that's why we forced the sign as close as we could to the corner.
So this is kind of a technical violation because we're technically closer to the right-of-way, but the sidewalk is farther away and it's a lesser two.
That is correct.
Finally, a variance from Schedule B, which limits the maximum improving coverage to fifty percent, and we're looking for fifty-one foot one five. 50%, and we're looking for 51 foot one five.
That is correct, yes.
The minimus request?
Very minimus request, yes.
What I'd like to do next, and last but least with respect to me, is go through Mr. Cole's report with you. I'm going to ask an overarching question. Fair to say that for all of his comments, the answer is either will comply or have complied, right?
Yes, we will comply. We did meet with Mr. Cole. We went through his letter thoroughly. I believe we addressed that thoroughly in response.
Not slightly, but...
Absolutely not.
So, starting on page four of his report, he says the zoning table and list of required variances on the cover sheet should be revised to reflect the requirements provided in the apartment table, which he said. We made that revision, right?
Yes, we have.
And the borough has it?
That's correct, yes.
Page five, Section 4A1, the applicant should provide testimony regarding the frequency of maintenance and billboard and landscaping. This board is going to subject to an operations and maintenance agreement with the borough, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the maintenance and both the board and the landscaping will be provided by the applicant, correct?
That's correct, and if the board wishes so, as well as the board's engineer, we can't fix no thing without the plans, we're going to resolution compliance if this application is approved.
Likely not to see maintenance more than once every four months or so on the board, based on our experience?
That's correct.
And obviously landscaping requires maintenance in the spring, it's once a week, in the summer, it's a little less in the fall, it's good.
Typically, planting season is typically in April when you plant the type of flowers, and you also take a look at anything with respect to the plantings that have been shown in the plans, shrubs, and also there'll be pruning, obviously. Usually, it's four to six weeks with any type of signs or billboards in this case that you have. And then obviously, at the end of the cycle in September, there is obviously clean-up general maintenance in terms of going into the winter. That's still my variance, I see.
Section B, the applicant should provide testimony whether the stormwater runoff is by sheet flow across the sidewalk.
Yes, it is, of course. What's going to happen with the site, which is interesting, I don't know if you can move to the grading plan that is in your packets, but the grading plan that was prepared essentially shows positive drainage that will eventually sheet flow into two yard area inlets that will eventually venture into an existing inlet that is on South Bridge Street. That was done deliberately so that we can address Cole's comment concerning any type of icing conditions, as there are residents that do walk around that area, and it does provide for relief in that location.
So this is been addressed?
That's correct.
Next, if the existing and proposed stormwater runoff is across the public sidewalk, this condition should be rectified due to potential icing, we just discussed that.
That is correct.
Section C, applicant shall determine the flood hazard area and floodway limits using this delineation in accordance with Method 1 as set forth at NJAC 7, following 13-3.0.
Yes, using Method 1 and using the existing plans, we determined that in the flood zone, it happens to be in, of course, in a flood zone AE, the elevation happens to be 50 feet. The approximate location of the base of the sign, the high side happens to be 48.7 feet, the low side happens to be 48.7 feet. Why is that? To allow for positive drainage around the monument, to be able to exit two to two yard inlets, and then eventually to South Bridge Street. With that methodology and looking at that, that puts you in a position of about two feet of water in case there happens to be a flood. And of course, I live in this area, and of course, you all know that this area commonly floods out, but the free passage of water will be allowed underneath the monument sign because of the location of the arches, so the sign should be not be affected.
Now, the next request is to provide testimony regarding, sorry, the next direction is to provide testimony regarding the determination of the flood hazard elevation and whether the methodology used complies with NJAC 713 and set.
Yeah, the methodology we used, again, was the flood epic, what was the epic one. We did recognize that we had two different areas to look at, whether or not that we could go for what's known as the NJDEP flood hazard permit by rule. We did look at permit of rule number 14, and then we also looked at an individual permit. Unfortunately, after deliberating with a couple of my professionals in my Newark office, we did discuss the fact that we thought it would be better we go for the individual permit. Mr. Cole did point that out in his letter before, and we did discuss that, and we are prepared to go in for the individual permit. Granted, in the future, as I've noted in the past, you know, we also look for solutions to get away from individual permits because of statutory limits. However, in order to make something like that work, you'd have to literally have a structure on poles supported two feet or four feet above the flood elevation to be able to go ahead and meet a permit by rule. We will not be able to do that in this instance to the sign.
So, two different follow-ups then. Number one, you're proposing going to get a permit. That's feasible, correct?
Yes, it is.
And it's not a deal, though?
No, not with the footprint disturbance, not with the fact that the structure does allow for free passage of water. The footprint of the foundations, or I should say, both the arches, is so de minimis that we will be able to use a payment for it.
Let me move to landscaping in Section G. If the total number of street trees drops below 19 trees, the applicant should either plant street trees, or consideration should be given for the applicant to provide a financial contribution of $650 for every street tree not provided. How are we responding?
So, we went ahead and talked to Mr. Cole about this in detail. Your ordinance is defined as is street trees or anything that happens to be frontage trees from the face of the medical building all the way to the curb line. So we went back and surveyed the entire property and looked at the amount of trees that happened to be in the property frontage. When we looked at a small stand of trees that happens to be located to the, I want to say, the southeast of the sign, that stand of trees is going to be obviously removed. It's a very small caliber-sized trees. When we took the total of all those trees, including the very small caliber, it was about 35 trees that would be removed. That's still a very insignificant amount compared to the amount of frontage trees that you have within both frontages, and because of the spacing requirement that's in your ordinance, we obviously can't meet that because of the fact that we need to have at least 100 feet of frontage along South Bridge Street to be able to meet that requirement. So what we're doing in lieu of is we're going ahead and providing landscaping, and landscaping in the form of plants, nearly 152 plants that'll make up for that. So if the board is inclined to ask, if we're inclined to ask for a waiver based on that criteria that I mentioned, however, if there is some type of financial contribution, that could be looked at as well. But we don't believe it's applicable because of the amount of street trees based on your ordinance that we looked at.
So the ask there is not, when we please have a variance, the ask is, could we either have the waiver or will pay the penalty?
That is correct, yes. But we think it's appropriate to ask for the waiver because of the amount of plants that are being introduced at the base of the site.
And then maintain the property.
That is correct, yes.
There's, next, at number three, the following landscape notes should be added to the plans in case the plans are meant to include these items, and then there's items A, which may have been added to the plans.
I believe that a majority of them have, but keep in mind, the issue is, is that a lot of what we're introducing is shrubs, but yes, we have introduced the notes. That's correct.
Moving to item E. One, there's a note that there should be testimony regarding whether the sign is double-sided. He has already discussed that it is double-sided. It does have the capability to display two different advertisements on the different sides, and the board would have eight seconds out of every two minutes on each side, correct?
That is correct. It's shown on the plans.
Sub three, the applicant should provide testimony that the sign complies, including size, location, level of illumination, advertisement, length, et cetera, with the New Jersey Department of Transportation regulations will require this.
That is correct, because if there's any notation that needs to be added, and Mr. Cole feels that that is necessary, as part of resolution of compliance, if this application be approved, we would add that.
And it does substantively comply, right?
That's correct.
Permit status should be...
Correct, the permit was updated at issue, that's correct.
Follow-up to that, municipality shall not grant any variance that is contrary to NJ. regulations. Are any of the variances requested contrary to NJ.
Absolutely none.
Subsection five, the applicant should provide testimony regarding whether the billboard has NJ approved.
As I, yeah, as I mentioned before, when we had sat down Mr. Cole prior to this hearing, our application for DOT was going to expire, however, extension was provided by DOT, and that information was provided, Mr. Cole.
There's a request, the relationship between Heather Hadner and the applicant, One Somerville OD LLC, should be explained in testimony. Ms. Hadner was an employee of Catalyst Experiential, which is the mothership for the entity One Somerville OD LLC, correct?
That is correct, yes. It's my understanding.
She's the person in the office who filled out the form?
Yes.
Sub seven, the level of illumination and foot candles associated with the lights are not depicted on the site plan. The site plan should be revised accordingly.
So what happened was, on the light plan, if we move to the light lighting plan, you do have a lighting plan that has been updated? Thank you. The photometric says the correct lighting. There is a photometric plan that's been added, and that photometric plan takes into account what the lighting levels will be from not just the sign, but any of the lighting that's on the ground. If you notice, and in previous testimony provided by our last witness, the foot candle knots are less than 0.3 foot candles at base. That's typically less than what you find in a lot of municipal ordinances. In many communities, your minimum foot candle is typically 0.5 foot candles. So in addition to the fact that this is a lighted intersection, I am controlled by the DOT, if you add those light levels, they probably would still meet the requirements and what have you. So it's adding a very de minimis effect.
Next, all LED lighting should be dimmable, and the level of illumination inspected by the borough's office should be granted approval. Are all such lights dimmable?
Yes, so we added a note to the lighting plan with that.
And of course, there's no problem with inspections, right?
Absolutely no problem with inspections.
We have indeed brought color samples, here we'll be able to run through them. The applicant should provide testimony whether there is sufficient sunlight to play grass underneath the breezeway.
Yeah, it's interesting that that came up. I mean, typically, what happens with these types of structures, you could lay them down in two different ways. One is you could put it down on a foundation mat, or you could put it on grade beams and what have you. If it's on a foundation mat, most likely that will be a resilient surface as opposed to grass going underneath. The other way is if you put it on grade beams, you can end up putting grass. But one way or another, we would be able to comply with any requirements.
The finish, the ceiling finish of the breezeway is not stated. It should deter birds from roosting or sitting on beams and squirrels from building nests. Have we done anything to deter wildlife from getting in there?
Yes, we've had extensive discussions with Mr. Cole, and what would end up happening is we ended up putting screening on that would be necessary to go ahead and not allow vermin to get into those areas.
And that's the next question, is will the applicant should provide testimony regarding the height of the tunnels and whether the screens, rates will be used to control wildlife out?
Yes.
How high are the tunnels, and are there any dissent screens?
Yeah, the tunnels, and if you go to the elevation plan and what have you, if you can zoom in a little bit, you'll notice with the tunnels and what have you, that the distance happens to be approximately eight foot four, eight foot six inches to the bottom of the VCT. So it's almost, when you go up to the roof rack, it's about 17 foot 10 inches. That's on the outside ends where you are mimicking the train tunnels. Tunnels themselves are approximately six to seven feet. They do say eight foot six inches diameter, but I think when I scaled the last time, it was just under eight feet, somewhere between seven and eight feet. That still would be screened so that you would not allow not just vermin, but then also people that would be able to enter next.
The electric service from the utility poles to the monument sign should be underground. Any reason we couldn't do that?
Yeah, we can do that. That's not going to be an issue. We do have to work with PSCNG with electrical plans. In my experience with monument signs or signs, typically you put a service request in, and then that service request goes, and it's approved, and we can make those plans as part of a conditional approval.
The drawing should be amended to include a restoration plan, which depicts her closed length escaping to restore the hedge road that is partially being removed for the construction entrance.
We've done that. We've provided that.
A note should be added to the plan stating that in sidewalks, paving, curving, et cetera, damage during construction will be replaced, and a driveway, asphalt paving, curb, and sidewalk detail should be added to the plan.
Those plans, yeah, those notation has been provided. As I mentioned earlier in my testimony, there is the possibility that even though the asphalt that's in the lot is in good shape, that let's say you could have some type of a backhoe or tractor that would go in and actually affect that area, we provide details to show that that will also be dressed up at the end of construction, and if we were to get their approval, as your engineer knows, if you go in for a compliance inspection, that area would be dressed up, and we would meet that criteria.
NJDEP is proposing to raise the elevation to 52.7 feet of the regulated flood hazard. All electrical connections, meters, et cetera, should be in elevation greater than 53.7 feet, which is one foot above the anticipated flood hazard.
So as I mentioned before with the electrical setup, yeah, any type of meter disconnects or any type of metering would be shown higher than that elevation and what have you. PSCNG would want to see that anyhow on any type of riser diagram, and if there's any detailing that we have to provide, we can provide that as part of a conditional approval.
Those are the questions that I have for you. Those are the questions that are on the, on the review letter. Let me ask you one final question, which is, are all of the opinions and statements that you testified to today been offered to a reasonable degree on professional circumstances?
Yes.
And none in further.
Anyone from the board have any questions? Let's have testimony. I have, Mr. Hay. Counselor, I customarily, in terms of Mr. Cole's report, I would ask that, notwithstanding the testimony has been given, that it be a conditional, if the board were somewhat inclined to approve the application, that clients with Mr. Cole's report would be a conditional approval.
Absolutely, no problem.
Anyone else before you have a question?
Clarify for me. South Bridge Street, the west curb line, South Bridge Street. How far away is that sign from that curb line?
So if we could go back to the site plan, we can zoom in to where the 30 foot is. The closest distance right now shows that it's 30 feet to the curb line. That is actually the closest distance to the property line, not to the curb line. The curb line is approximately less than 40 feet.
Yeah, okay. I thought that was...
I have a question. Is there like a space in the sign for CPU, computer, something that runs the sign? You're like, I could have to defer that.
Yeah, so I want to be careful of the testimony. I can tell you, yes, the way it operates is individual...
So go ahead. I, if I think your testimony, I'll just kind of be straight up and square.
There are individual modules, all of which get joined together, and then they're all controlled by a central process.
Anyone else?
I just have two comments. One is on the height. The height we're talking about is to the beam, and I picked up on this, that for ordinance, people were just halfway up for the structure, so technically, it's not a variance, not a 40, 44 or 41 foot height, 36. It's the midline of the gable, using the borough definition.
So it's the midline of the gable, Mr. Cole? That's correct. If your distance is 35 feet and you add, you still would most likely not be a variance.
You have to get a variance, but it's not a 40 change, it's more like 36. I'm just picking out for that, and then the response was, I think there's 23 trees, is what I think the survey picked up that's existing. Therefore, you comply, so you don't need a waiver or additional money for the trees, if you have 23.
Only for the spacing. Use the spacing.
Right, I understand you're saying you don't have the spacing, but you have enough, based on your response on reading that, based on the survey, that even with the trees being removed, that you're still having 23 street trees remaining for the facility.
Right.
Right, and that, just to clarify, then, they don't need a waiver for the trees, that one.
Yeah, the way I interpreted was, after we did this extensive survey with our, with our servicer, it's essentially a tree survey, and looked at every single caliber, it was on spacing. I mean, you can never meet the spacing requirement and what have you.
Sheriff, I have one other question. You had talked about, you know, measures in terms of pests and vermin and things like this. Will you have any kind of a security or, you know, in essence, a security force or officer or someone taking a look at the, at the property periodically in terms of, I guess, this may be unseemly to say, but, you know, some of those areas could be locations for people to hang out.
Let's be safe, that's unseemly.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to, I, it seemed like a practical question, but I didn't...
It's a very practical question, because they call it bumble, so I got my own term for it, but people do have a habit of finding prints, and that would be an ideal spot to that. And I'll be honest with you, lightly, that's, 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 that's. That is intended for that.
Just security, or is there, you know, do you rely on law enforcement normally, or do you have your own people, or? What do you actually deal with that?
Yeah, it's okay. I think the question that you're asking is a little bit outside the scope of this witness. And my suggestion is maybe I could bring Tia back up to just very quickly answer my question.
Really?
She remains under oath, that's fine.
Yeah, so for all of our installations, we installed a security camera, which is really for our own liability perspectives. Though I will add, we've been able to be helpful to local police departments in the past when something's happened there, or, you know, installations, and we have a camera, and we've noticed that. And so we have our, our, our security camera there for general security purposes. You'll notice when we submit in the OAM agreement as well, the annual maintenance schedules, that in the majority of months, we have weekly porter service, porter service, which is just general wellness checks of the installation, to make sure that everything is operating correctly. And, you know, the same regards to, we look at, we see it, we go and dress it, we fix it, the whole nine yards. We installed the ornamental fencing as a way to deter anyone from accessing any portion of the display, right? So, or the installation, so no one can go and lounge in the tunnelways, et cetera. And then the screens, as Mr. Hay had referenced. So we have those various security elements in place.
So you would have real, real people on site to inspect or review?
Yeah, and that's, and also, you know, keep in mind that we'll have people there for non-security purposes doing the, especially in some months, it's a weekly lawn care checks and gardening checks. So those folks will be on site on a weekly basis as well. And if there is any issues with our security, we can report it back to us, correct?
Are there real-time security cameras, or are they, if something goes wrong, do you run it?
They're, they're real-time.
Somebody's looking at them?
Oh, sorry, they're, they're recording.
Yeah, okay, okay, so there's nobody watching the facility?
Correct.
Are the security cameras going to be in each one of the tunnels, or you just have them outside?
I would say that if there's particular places where we feel the need to install them, we can have a conversation with Mr. Cole and install them as well.
Well, would you not feel it might be necessary to install them into each one of the tunnels?
I certainly understand that.
Farther in, you know, so.
Yeah, no, I certainly understand that, I see that as being a good idea.
So you would do that?
Yes, if that's absolutely, and I agree, I see the necessity and understand where it's coming from.
There's no monitoring, there's no monitoring of?
There's no monitoring of the cameras, but we have the live, oh, sorry, sorry, we should say, we have one hundred percent, twenty-four hour, seven recorded feed. So if something were to happen, we can go back in and pull that footage.
And you would not be able to see it as it was happening? And that, that becomes somewhat problematic.
So I know, sir, Mr. O'Neil, you were specifically saying that a lightweight screen would be insufficient. My understanding is that there would actually be a fairly substantial, I mean, it wouldn't be chicken wire, basically, basically, in slot block. It's a fairly substantial.
Yeah, you're not talking about chicken wire. We had this discussion with Mr. Cole. It would be something that would be a security screen, that would not allow people in here.
Yeah, we're talking the same words.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And if, for whatever reason, it was insufficient, because somebody got in the first time, we're not interested in putting the same thing up over and over and over again. It would become more schaccaraca as you roll off, right?
Correct, and we had that discussion originally as well with Mr. Cole about if something becomes a persistent problem, or a problem that you've already variety that, you know, we hadn't expected, or planned for now, to install additional security features when it becomes, and that's excessive.
Did we ever had someone view one of our installations?
No, I will add that, and you saw in the greatness video that I showed of some of our previous installations, we have one installation with a three hundred and thirty foot long reflection pole. We've never had a problem with someone trying to go swimming in it, or climb on it. We've just never experienced problems with people trying to climb on our installations, or use them for anything other than their intent, right?
You could see where the tunnel could be an issue, because the reflecting pool is in public. But a tunnel is.
Sure.
Is private. So you could, so, well, I appreciate what you're saying. I, I think you need to look at the tunnels differently.
Sure.
When you're reflecting.
Absolutely.
And if there is a, if the, I think it's compromise, anyway, and when your staff comes and sees that, is there a positive by which the town gets notified that it was, that something happened, or that this was not mentioned?
Certainly could be, and this I want to jump in and answer. We negotiate the operations and maintenance agreement with each borough, municipality, township that we work with. We have a standard version, but if there are specific requests, like notify us whenever there is a defect in the security here, that's fine, we can go ahead.
Well, can we try to provide some details on the fences in PowerPoint, being the height? Because if it's a six-foot-high fence, that's a variance that needs to be discussed. Yeah, this is on the site plan, right, Todd, this is something that?
Well, so that fence, yeah, unfortunately was not shown, but if you look at the victoria, it should fall under the four-foot criteria to the front yard.
I'm just saying, if we're going to use the fence for security, usually it's a six-foot fence. So it's a six-foot to the front yard, step back, I'm just, I'm just.
It's forty in design, so it's working well.
Yeah, four-foot fence to the front yard would not require a variance, but then it goes back to security, it would work with that.
I, I'm just asking, because in my business, my company rents locker, bike lockers for New Jersey Transit, and every once in a while, we find someone that's living in one. So, and those are closed.
The rent's really cheap.
It is, it's really cheap.
Something gave me hell about. Mr. Cole, one of the things you mentioned, the site plans would be updated to show that, and if we have to, there's a double swing gate for access for a vehicle. We'll, we'll do that as well, it's not more.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if the board's thinking about the security fence, that.
Sorry.
Need a variance for. I'm just making sure that we bring that up, that if it's a four-foot higher than a four-foot fence, and if it's more, it's less than sixty percent clear, these are at least required to do that. Typically, a security fence would be a tighter mesh and higher than four feet, than what's on the PowerPoint, should the board want to go that direction.
We'd be happy to install if you're right, if you're right, so that we would also ask for the variance if there's something.
And we tried to address your comments from taking into consideration to the aesthetic intent of the display. So combining the security element with also not wanting to interfere or disturb the generally pleasing aesthetic intent, right, of the monument display. So hence the ornamental fencing and security cameras.
Which was designed in consultation with the borough.
Correct.
So this is not something where you, Tia, or the company just decided you really liked this, this sort of the app?
Correct, and it was just in addition to as well this grid that we discussed, as many aesthetically pleasing security features that we could come up with in collaboration to address that.
Can anyone else have any questions in the testimony given by Mr. Hay?
Yes, is there backup power? I'm going to defer. So on many of our installations, we have backup power. There's not one that is built into this design as part of the site plan. I imagine we would probably have the backup generator for this. So my follow-up question is, in the event of a large flood event, right, let's talk about the sign being used for the human messages and whatnot. A, what's the process by which those messages are sent to the display? And B, how long will the backup power be able to transmit, or at least turn the displays on to transmit that message? I can tell you the backup power lasts as long as the gas in the generator, but Tia is the person to tell you about the human messages.
And I can tell you that all of our installations are programmed to automatically run alerts when they're put out by, whether it be FEMA, the FBI, or Amber Alerts, right? So in the, in the case of your question, the alerts from FEMA will appear automatically once they're issued, and they will run again approximately once every minute on the display. There are instances as well, which, when necessary, the, you have the emergency messaging override the content, so that that is what is shown specifically on the display.
Yeah, so there have been flood events here where the town has been under duress for days. So under that kind of circumstance, will the sign be, will advertising pause so that messages can be communicated?
I would say that's something that we could certainly add to the operations and maintenance agreement, right? To my knowledge, our installations are currently programmed specifically to do that with Amber Alerts. In the instance of an emergency such as a flood that is very much negatively impacting an area, we could have language that would say that that would override all other, you know, content.
Don't get too detailed, because when it flows down here, you can't see without a boat.
Good point, the advertising is sort of taking space, and the board don't really have an appetite. Advertising, there's nobody around. The only thing it's useful for is getting that emergency message.
Really, the only emergency message right there is you've gone too far, you're troubled.
Correct.
That's at that point, a major flood event, it's ten to twelve feet there.
So the bottom line is that, yes, our, our installations can be programmed to do just that.
Anyone else? Anyone in the audience have any questions of Mr. Hay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
Will be by the end, twenty-five ream. Just to go on Ed's comment, his comment, we do have flood events in near fifty-four feet, wherever above where electrical DCUs would be. Put them up a lot higher. I controlled that intersection during Floyd, and a couple of others a few ago, and it was above my head. We had to pull out everything, so, just letting you know, put your DCUs up high, highest you can put them.
Yeah, I will respond to that. I've been working in the neighboring Hillsborough about, you know, the flood event that occurred last, Ida, that was a five-hundred-year event.
Ida was nothing compared to the other two in New Jersey.
And then the other two afterwards, I was going to say that.
Because we did, we did the high tide at full flow.
It's five-hundred-year events.
Yeah, at least.
They're once-in-five-hundred-year events. The way the codes are written for any type of mechanical electric equipment, yeah, the NEC code's very clear, and some of the codes in the UCC are clear, a Uniform Construction Code, that is, for New Jersey. You have to mount those structures above the flood zone, and you have to adhere to the new flood rules, so.
But that building that sits there, that took out the entire bottom floor. And also the building around the corner, also, just to let you know how high you have to put it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a five-hundred-year flood. Yes, Mr. O'Neil, it was a five-hundred-year flood, all three of them.
Yeah, all three of them. That before they went to was a five-hundred-year old, I'm in your flood, I'm three thousand years old.
There was, there was one, the generator popped up, where is that generator going to go?
It's usually a mobile generator, but we sometimes have to incorporate it into the device itself, through space and current.
One more comment on that is that if it gets that high, that sign's useless, we're not in the room. It's irrelevant.
Anyone here?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The board places, I would call him Sir Matt Secler, or is it Dr. Fink?
Evening, Sergeant Pierce, you're right in. You saw me write the testimony you were about to give, and this matter will be the truth, so I hope you got it. Yes, I did. Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
My name is Thatcher Secler, that's S-E-C-K-L-E-R, Stonefield Engineering Design. I address the ninety-two Park Avenue, Rutherford, New Jersey.
Very good, Sir Castle, you're with us. Thank you. Sir Secler, how are you currently employed?
I'm a principal of Stonefield Engineering Design.
And how long have you been in the field?
Over ten years.
Prior to your employment at Stonefield, did you receive any education, training, certifications that enabled you to practice in the field that you do now?
Yes, the Thatcher Science and Civil Engineering from the Union College of American Work. A master's in civil engineering program at the Workers' University, licensed professional engineering state. Also recognized professional traffic operations engineer by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which requires both examination and experience.
Do you hold any, you just told us this, I apologize. Are all of your licenses current and informed?
Yes.
Can you name three municipalities in the area that you've appeared before?
Warren, Hillsborough, I was here many years ago on Bank America, on High Street. Thank you.
And have you been excited? There we go, done. Have you had a chance to review a project that we're here for today?
Yes.
Okay, then, I want to start by talking to you a little bit about your approach to analyzing projects that we're here for today.
Certainly. With this project and all digital display projects, I start looking at a project in three folds. First is a macro look, which is looking at basically the federal guidelines, the overall guidelines for all general advertising displays, both digital and static. We also then look at a micro analysis, which is looking at this specific users, catalysts, displays in the past, getting an understanding of their impacts on traffic, both pre-instruction and post-instruction. And then lastly, we look uniquely at this specific site, look how this site's traffic characteristics may or may not be suitable for this type of display. And that's the level of analysis I want.
Okay, let's get started at that high level. What data does your review or conclusions do you read?
Yeah, so there's a collection of studies, there's been numerous publications established that have looked at the impacts of advertising, again, both visual advertising and generic static advertising. The most significant study was done by the Federal Highway Administration, and that became the basis for what many states and federal regulations have been established.
And what conclusions did that study reach?
So the study utilized technologies to get understanding for the level of which drivers were focused on the road, and then focus on other distractions, whether it be advertising displays or other general roadside features. When data was collected, literally, they would track the human angle of the drivers. They would track the eyesight of the drivers. Essentially, they concluded that when there were billboards present, that they were not looked at anymore, substantially anymore than when there was no billboards present. And that overall driver's attention did not change, whether it was a advertiser or a drive or something. So essentially, the billboards in the study could not affect driver's safety.
So I.
I don't want, pardon me, I don't want to interrupt your talking. Casting a bow a bit, were, is this, are you testifying to this as to the first, for the first time? Because I don't remember receiving any of the materials I got.
Yes, there was no report prepared.
All right, well, I'm going to ask that your report be marked as applicants exhibit A three.
Is, is this the presentation that you're talking about?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I apologize, I talked about you going.
I, I, I was going to say, I know, I've done, you know, co-counseling before, sometimes that's the hardest thing to keep up with. So I understand. Thanks to your colleague, too, because she, she could tell I was, you know, looking around, so.
A three.
The A three in evidence.
Thank you.
I can't help myself, because I came up, need those departments, and I love the weak link record. You said that the drivers in the study didn't look at the billboards anymore when they weren't there. Is it fair to say they didn't glance away from the road anymore often when the billboards were there, as opposed to when the billboards were not there?
Correct.
Thank you. Are there any federal regulations that apply to advertising along the lines?
Yes, there are federal standards, and essentially, they've established in what zone districts, displays to be installed. They also established suggested intervals for digital displays, how frequently the messages can be changed, or should be changed. And required states to adopt regulations for limiting size and the amount of signs drivers see along the road, the frequency in which they experience edition inside.
And has New Jersey adopted those regulations?
Yes, New Jersey has adopted those regulations. They've established one thousand square feet as the limit in terms of the overall maximum size of a sign. They've established a spacing distance of three thousand feet between the visual displays along the same roadway. And they've also established an eight-second interval for which messages can be changed. And you will not see, if a display follows the state regulation, a message changed in any more frequency than eight seconds.
At a macro level, then, billboards in general, what conclusions are you able to read from perspective just from?
Generally, the data suggests that highway advertising does not contribute to negative impact on driver's safety.
Let's move to the micro level. What other data have you looked at?
So for the micro level data, this is what we looked at catalyst displays specifically. Because catalyst displays are different than, I would say, a lot of traditional highway advertising, where you'd see it on a large monopole, up over the roadway. As you saw from Tia's presentation, a lot of these displays are monument-style, artistic in nature, and again, have a different feel from what the, let's say, traditional highway advertising design was. So we looked at four specific sites that Catalyst has completed. It's had enough time to look at a before and after study, to get an understanding of, you know, the impact, or lack thereof, of these catalyst displays that have been installed. We did look at four projects that had more different roadway types. Yeah, gave us to get a wide range of type of roadways, to get really a. We did look at four projects that had more different roadway types. Yeah, gave us to get a wide range of type of roadways to get really a understanding of if, what these displays impacts are on these different level roadways. One, type of roadways that limit access highway of over sixty miles per hour. This is your, you know, high speed state highway or interstate highway. We looked at a site that is on a divided highway, the traffic that ranges from forty five to sixty five miles an hour. Again, specifically with traffic lights interspersed, similar to most, I'd say, state highways in New Jersey. And we looked at surface level roadways. Those are roadways with traffic level of speeds between twenty five and forty miles an hour. Every more akin to like a county roadway system. And then lastly, one then is at intersection, ones that would have speeds between twenty five and forty miles an hour. When the light is green, obviously, when the light is red in the direction, you have cars stop. We wanted to get an understanding of, based on these four roadway types, have these catalyst displays been installed and have any effect on the travel, the safety of the roadways.
Let's start with the first of those sites. What data were you reviewing in this instance?
So in this case, we looked at three years of data, both before and after the display was installed. It included the years twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen, before the installation, and twenty nineteen to twenty twenty one. This would be on expressways, this would be on that highest level, that limited access highway location. Specifically on this site, we looked at both the raw number of crashes and the overall crash rate to determine the amount of accidents both before and after the display was installed. A crash rate is what we utilize in the traffic injury industry to basically normalize accident data. It is a value that is based on one million vehicles miles traveled. This allows us to correlate or to balance and compare apples to apples, accidents on roadways of high volume and accidents on roadway of low volumes, because we have this denominator that is based on million vehicle miles traveled. So for this, this location, it's actually, we found that the accident number of accidents has actually reduced in the time periods from when the display was prior to be installed to after being installed.
No, obviously, from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty one, which is the after period, that's during COVID, right?
Correct. And that is why we utilize, again, that denominator per million vehicle miles traveled. So volume was less on that roadway. The factor that we use to come up with, again, the number of vehicles that were traveling on the roadway through these three years is actually different than what was used during the earlier few years.
This is the high speed highway that you were talking about?
Correct.
And this star we're reporting with the pointer is the location of the catalyst monument?
That is correct. And what we looked at is about a thousand feet in either direction from the sign. That's essentially the display distance you'd see the sign, see the sign to get really the proper view shot of where that could impact driver behavior.
Got it. What caused the crash rate to fall?
So that's tough to pin down. I mean, obviously, as an engineer, we're always trying to design our roads to help decrease the amount of accidents on roadways. In addition, cars are getting safer every year. More and more cars have blind spot indicators and different avoidance features, like, you know, it was slow down, the car firmly stops. People are using hands free phones more towards the car itself. So again, there are many factors that could cause the crash rate to fluctuate, in this case, drop it down. By ten state, we're looking at this analysis as well as previewing the next couple of locations, is that the installation of the display did not increase the accidents. It was not a factor in increasing the accidents. It really is a non-factor when it comes to these pre and post things.
It's a little good, I saw on the school. That's like the ours we're about to drop off.
Sure, kill crawl.
We go to the next study. Tell me about the crash rate here. And I know, I mean, this is all basically gonna be the same underlying information, it's just different crash data, right?
Correct. This one is a divided highway. This is actually four years of before and after, just because of, it was installed a little earlier than the first one, so we have four years, both before and after. But again, very similar, this one did see also, again, a decrease in crash rate. Essentially, we're not stating that you install a sign, all of a sudden your traffic accidents go away. It's just this is clearly not a contributing factor in increasing accidents.
That's not a condition of approval we would accept, right?
Correct.
As many crashes as you got there.
Correct.
This does not take place during COVID in either the before or after, though, correct?
Correct, yes.
Going to the next study location?
Yes, this is, again, a divided roadway. Again, we did a very similar study, looking at accidents before and after. And again, found that the accident rate did drop slightly comparing with before and after. But again, our overall conclusion is this is not a contributing factor to accidents.
And last one?
This was at a singleized intersection, so we looked at the analysis at both roadways. One of the roadways actually did see a drop in accident rate, and then one actually stayed nearly identical both before and after the installation of the display.
So you told us with respect to the macro level that billboards in general don't have an impact on traffic safety. On the micro level, what about catalyst installations in particular?
Again, catalyst installations don't seem to have a statistically significant impact on accidents. That would be our conclusion regarding these catalyst displays.
With respect to this project in particular, then, you had an opportunity to review the site photos?
Yes, I have.
And then you had the opportunity to visit the location?
Yes, I have.
Can you tell us a little bit about the traffic characteristics of the location?
Sure. Route two oh six, it's a non-limited access highway, so that would really be in that second category in terms of what we were looking at if you want to compare it to the micro level analysis that we performed. Because it does obviously have a divider and have some higher speeds. In fact, the speed limit's about fifty miles an hour. We see people traveling at fifty five when they catch the green lights in this area, but there are traffic lights, driveways, and people entering and exiting the traffic flow. In terms of traffic volumes, it's between thirty and thirty five thousand vehicles per day, travel up and down Route two oh six in this vicinity. And as mentioned earlier, this is located at a traffic signal, which does have some limited movements. You obviously don't have a left turn coming in the southbound direction at this location. We did look at accident rates in general at this location to get understanding if there's any prevailing, I would say, geometric condition that may adversely affected by the installation of this display. And what we actually found was the accident rate at this location is one point three two accidents per million vehicle miles traveled. And this, we want to compare this to, because that just number out there on its own doesn't mean much, we went to compare it to statewide averages on Route two oh six and also statewide averages for similar roadway types, because two oh six throughout New Jersey is very different in different locations. Overall, along two oh six, we're looking at accident rates of three point oh seven to four point five five per million vehicle miles traveled. Again, we're at one point three two at this location. And then for all of New Jersey on kind of divided highways of four lanes of war and four lanes of war meaning at least two lanes in each direction, the rates ranged from one point five one to two point one eight accidents per million vehicle miles traveled. So this is still a location that is below the statewide average for, you know, two, four lane roadways on divided highways. So we don't believe that this site's location specifically has an accident problem that could possibly be impacted by the installation of the display. That said, the installation of the display, I also reviewed its site location, because I wanted to make sure that it was clear of any sightlines. It will not have any impact of any driver's sightlines, meaning it will not impact someone who needs to see a stopped car or moving traffic that wants to make a right turn or left turn into the traffic flow. So it has been located, again, significantly far back off of the travelway, so it does not have any negative impact in terms of its location. Also, we reviewed it compared to other signs in the area, will not impede on any private business signs or any roadway signs that are located in the area and have any negative effect of that.
So I'd ask you about your opinion with respect to traffic safety at the general level, at the specific level, now that you've talked a little about the project. I think you just told us, but I'm gonna ask you to sum up. Is this digital monument proposed by Catalyst likely to negatively impact traffic safety?
No.
And are all the opinions that you testified to today helping fit a reasonable meaning of professional certainty?
Yes.
Answer all my questions.
Anyone from the board have any questions, Mr. Secler? Anyone from the audience have any questions on the testimony you just gave? Questions?
All right, you can pour back to the dollars. Thank you all.
I'm gonna have to reveal some comments about the air condition.
That's one way of putting it.
God, it's starting to make me, they be monitoring it a little bit.
Mr. Gervis, one more housekeeping item. I believe we neglected to mark the materials board as an exhibit. I think that needs to be exhibit A four.
Actually, if I recall correctly, we actually gave that A three.
Oh, so then gentlemen needs to be A four.
The traffic report, and I'll ask the.
Okay.
The traffic report will be in fact A four, under record.
Okay. Then I will correct my very formal notes as well.
Are you cold? Oh, no, no, I'm just, I was gonna swear in the wet.
Want to stand?
Yes, stand. You saw me swear the testimony you were about to give and this matter will be the truth, so hope you got.
I did.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
My name is Golda Spire, G O L D A, S P E Y E R.
Counselor?
Yes, and you see I have a attorney from McHann and Stoutland, back with you. Miss Spire, can you please state your business address for the record?
Sure. So I did put my brief CV on the screen for you, but I work for Topology Orlando's Planning Firm in Newark, New Jersey, sixty Union Street.
Great. Are you a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey?
I am. I have my American Institute of Certified Planners license as well as my New Jersey professional license.
And how long have you been a professional planner in New Jersey?
I think since twenty seventeen or eighteen.
Okay.
Maybe twenty eighteen.
Okay. And approximately, how many planning and zoning boards in New Jersey have you, have accepted you as a professional planner?
So for this client, I've represented them in front of Burton Township, Sprayville Township, and Washington Township recently. A lot of the time, I'm up on the board with serving you as the board planner, and I do that in South Orange, Rockaway, Roseland, Horsttown, and Caldwell. And I've done that in Lacey Pass. And I've done private testimony, a list of some towns, Milburn, North Arlington, Newark, Rosie City, East Orange, Wayne, Chadmont Township, those are the ones.
Sounds good to me.
We offer Miss Spire as a professional planner.
Of the action.
Thank you very much. And what, you mentioned that you're employed by Topology. What is your title there?
So I'm a principal planner.
Thank you. In preparing your testimony, have you reviewed the borough zoning ordinances, reviewed the application, and remain present for all of the testimony tonight?
I have. I was.
Okay, thank you. And then you have a presentation prepared for tonight, and I believe that's gonna be marked as exhibit A five, correct?
That is gonna be A five.
Thank you. And go ahead, Miss Spire, if you wanna proceed.
I'm the last witness. I'll try to summarize what my prior witnesses did when I can summarize, and then I'll emphasize more on the new stuff. So what I have is a slide deck that's gonna walk you through site suitability, because that's the main reason why we're here. So under the ordinance, we're a site plan, so we can't just pull a zoning permit. We'd be for Orlando's board. What brings us to the zoning board rather than the planning board is the use variance. So that's my main function as a planner, and that's what I'm gonna testify to. So to walk you through the subject site, just briefly, again, just to tie it back with my testimony in a moment. We're in the I one industrial zone here. We're a pretty large lot, three point two acres. It's a, I guess I'd call it a corner lot with almost like three frontages, because we, as you can see where my red dot on the pointer here, we have an odd shaped polygon lot where we front on South Bridge Street, we front on Route two oh six, and then there's a little weird notch there. But that, I mention that because it's gonna come back up in one of my C variances. So on the site, an existing improvement is a healthcare facility. We talked about that. I'm not gonna get too into depth about the site improvements, but there is an existing structure on the site. It's a building, and we're gonna be a second structure. It's one of the other use variances. But in general, we're surrounded by utility use, commercial use. It's in line with an I type zone. And there really is no proximity, at least within two hundred feet and within this vantage point of this map, which, as you can see down here, it might be a little hard to see, but this is a scale of four hundred feet. So we're, we're hundreds and hundreds of feet from any kind of residential that I know. So I'm just gonna show you a few pictures of the site. I think the board is probably familiar with it. What I want to just point out in these series of photos is, this is, I took this with my drone. And this is coming with a vantage point from Hillsborough. And the point here is that this is really a gateway site in that it is your entrance to Somerville. You cross Wirtz and River, and this is one of the first properties you're gonna see in Somerville. And that's gonna tie into how your master plan encourages gateways. So just a couple other vantage points. And this is looking at two oh six from the other direction towards Hillsborough. And this is the vantage point from South Bridge Street. So familiarize the board and just, you know, I refer to the site plan for the actual site plan, but you'll see like an arrow here pointing to approximate where the structure is, where the monument will be. So the proposed use is a by ordinance definition or a billboard, and that's just the technicality of the ordinance definition. But we like to think that we're a monument display sign. We're not what you would see on the highway as a monopole billboard that's, you know, fifty, sixty feet up in the hair where there's no kind of landscaping or any kind of architecture aesthetic associated with that. We're really like a unique product. I almost like to say we're an apple and that's a banana in the world of signage. It's just two different things, but by definition, we're a billboard. So that's where the use variance comes in. Tia did a fantastic job explaining the site on an architectural level, where we really honed in on the details and the gable roof and every little bit of detail to this. But just to recap, it is architecturally treated with this Sierra Cut stone. It's a gable roof. It's not a billboard. It's not any kind of billboard I've ever seen. And there will be some aesthetic lighting and landscaping and other features added to that. So I've mentioned this because it's gonna tie back into certain suitability under what is the MDDG standard here. So this is a list of your zoning. I'm not gonna read all of it, but it is a long list of what is permitted or conditionally permitted in the I zone. And it's generally commercial and obviously industrial in nature. Residential's not a permitted use, which will tie into site suitability in a moment. But I do wanna show you that accessory permitted uses do include signs. So because we're a principal use because of what is being displayed on it, that categorizes us in this principal nature. But the structure itself is a sign, and you, it wouldn't be a musical sign generally in this corporate culture. If I'm going too fast, just let me go. So the D variances is why we're here before this board rather than the planning board. And there's three in total. There's two D one variances that are very intertwined with each other. It is on the screen before you. It's also in the report. I don't read it quite verbatim, but I will just paraphrase here that one of the use variances is because we're off-site premise advertising. What does that mean? Medical building is there today. It's not a sign built with a medical building. It's got other advertising for things that are not on that lot. So that's the first use variance. So it's really more about the use than what is like, I guess, the structure. But the structure itself becomes also a use variance because there is an existing building on the site, so this is a second principal structure. So that's why it's really intertwined. I don't really know many other second structures other than wireless cell towers and billboards. But I, your ordinance has a prohibition on second principal uses of structures. So that is the D one use variances. Now, this one is kind of a gray area in our, in our planning world. But in New Jersey, if you have a height variance on an accessory sign, we usually look at that as a bulk variance. But because it's a principal structure, it becomes this principal height question. And so just out of an abundance of caution, we want to testify to a D six variance under municipal law, which if you exceed height in ten feet or ten percent, it's you on the D six level. So it's not your traditional bulk variance. I'm gonna kind of add a little more meat to my testimony in a moment to that. But those are the D variances before you. To go over the proofs, the burden of proof is on us to demonstrate why these things can be legally approved. You know, zoning seams ridges, any. You know, zoning seems rigid as when you read it in black and white, you have a code. But case law in New Jersey over decades and decades, especially this one, which is the Medici case back in the 80s, has shown that it's not as rigid if there is certain criteria met, that board can legally deviate from the code. And so I'm gonna walk you through the Medici standards, which is the case they use to guide boards on use variances, D1, and there's two problems to that. There's a positive problem and a negative problem. And I think this board's probably heard Medici before, but you know, we're new.
Once or a hundred times.
We're new application, so I have to do it every time for our record, so I apologize, so you'll probably hear it again over again.
So always a warning list.
Yeah, so to the positive, there's three questions, does this advance the purposes of zoning, that's kind of a high level, you know, good planning kind of question. Is it used particularly suited at the property, that's now kind of microanalyzing the site, the lands, and then the last one is, do you meet the enhanced burden of proof, which basically asks, okay, you had a zoning code that prohibited this, how are you reconciling the fact that it was out of your code? And I'm gonna answer all three of those, and I'm also gonna go through the negative criteria, which is, okay, so if we permit this, do we have any negative impact on the general welfare or Jason Parpies? And then is there any kind of impairment to the overall master plan? So those are the five questions under the two problems.
Just one quick question, you have a, you know, when you talk about the positive criteria and the purposes of zoning, you're referring to section, section two of the MLU Act, correct?
Yep, so it's 40, holden 55D, section two, it's like page two, I guess, of the municipal land use law, page one probably cover and establishes it.
Right.
So it's literally the next, the next page. And it has a list of purposes, and I'm gonna hone in on three that I think advance the purposes here. And I'll paraphrase to kind of speed it along, but purpose A is about the general promoting the public health, safety morals, and general welfare that went on. You know, that kind of goes with the negative criteria too, that we're, you know, doing the planning here. And Tia earlier with Calis testified to all the municipal communications and emergency messaging here. So it really does have a purpose there for enhancing residents' quality of life and that, you know, emergency, on-the-spot messaging. It's, I think that's a key to purpose A. Then you have purpose I, which speaks about visual environments and the good civic design. You know, our team, we had more than one, one that I attended, a technical review committee with your staff, and talked about the design, and you know, there's this historic train station, and how can we bring that together? So I really think we advanced purpose I that way. And then lastly, purpose M is just about like sufficient appropriate locations for certain types of commercial industrial uses that are open and respectful to the environment. And stormwater is included in our design, and we think we also hit this purpose, purpose M, because we think this is an efficient land use at a suitable location. So why is it a suitable location, kind of question two here. So we put these monument display signs, you know, they wouldn't make sense in our, on a residential corridor, they make sense on a highway. So here's Route 206, and we analyze these highways for suitability because of the volume of vehicles and the communications that we wanna put out there. And then we have this unique and thoughtful design that is intended into the aesthetic to be placemaking. And so that would be akin to your Route 206 corridor, as I said, it's from Hillsborough, from, from south of, where this municipal is, it's the first, probably like one of the first parcels you actually see. And so this goes in with the whole concept of placemaking and gateways, and putting that Somerville Municipal logo onto the product. And so this keeps in with that historic aesthetic and cultural heritage that I think Somerville's trying to achieve. And I'm gonna get into the master plan momentarily, which really suits this. So then again, with the freestanding signs, it's not unusual to see signs here on this corridor, so that would be suitable for a sign aspect. And then I testified that the property is multi-acreage, it has decent frontage, it's not, rammed, I guess is the word, but it, it has the build, it's buildable for this. It's, it will give breathing space to the other things that are happening on the site. And lastly, it's not in vicinity of residential. What Calis does is actually do a great job at the lighting technology, and if it is, you know, residential, we put that at bay, but I don't even really need to get into that because you're really not within residential. So then that enhanced Medici burden of proof, how do you reconcile that this is not in your zoning ordinance? And that's kind of why we're here, because use variances are case by case, and I don't think that when you prohibited, and when I say you, I mean Somerville. When billboards were prohibited, like I said, we're a monument display sign, it's a technical definition that makes us a billboard. We have this design and character, I don't think that that was contemplated in the billboard prohibition. It's not a monopole sign that's a flat vinyl that's in the air, as you see from all the imagery, it's, it's nothing like that. So it's not an additional building structure, it's that monument side, and I think it's just a very unique circumstance that, that kind of just not even been contemplated. So then to the negative criteria, and just again for the record, I think I said this, but we have two D1 use variances, they're very intertwined, so I'd like to just insert that all the positive and negative really covers both, I'm not gonna do a whole round two, we'll be doing this for the second D variance, but with the second principal structure. But no substantial detriment to your public good, you know, we had traffic, we had engineering, we had the operator who seasons in this, we had traffic talk about traffic testimony, and you know, it is not a substantial detriment, there is no new traffic generated from it, I know there might be like traffic questions around it, but the structure doesn't create traffic. People, for the most part, aren't getting in their car to go drive to this thing in a way that they might drive to a commercial building, and then if you put a commercial building in a residential neighborhood, what does that mean? That's a negative impact, this is, this is none of that, it's no generator of traffic, is what I'm saying. There's lighting technology in place, it's not gonna harm any of the businesses around, which most of them are utilities, to be honest. And the visual impact is mitigated because, as I said, it's not a monopole billboard, it's very aesthetic, and a lot of thought went into that. And it's regularly maintained, there's an operations, the maintenance manual that's gonna come with it, I believe it's a condition of approval. And we've incorporated that enhanced landscaping, so there's really no detriment to public good in terms of the character of the neighborhood. And then the negative criteria on, you know, how is this in line with your master plan? So I look at a lot of master plans, and I've actually never seen a town get so specific in their master plan about gateways, as Somerville did. And this is a 2019 master plan, so pretty fresh, and I'm just gonna read some of these quotes, and I just think they speak for themselves. So your master plan speaks to reinforcing the historic gateway in the downtown areas as part of an overall experience when entering a special plane. It speaks to safeguarding the historic aesthetic and cultural heritage of Somerville, reinforcing the historic gateways into the downtown area as part of an overall visual experience with entering a special plane. And to create a vibrant gateway to downtown Somerville from Route 206. So I think it's pretty spot on, actually, that condition we're trying to accomplish here. So the D6 variance, as I said, is a gray area because it's a principal structure, do we, do we hit that 10%, 10 feet, etc.? So it sounds like earlier tonight, we've already somehow artificially lowered it through definition because of the ridge, as your town planner mentioned. But I think we might still have it, and in case we do, just know that it's a less standard, it's relaxed in terms of the standard proof when you review them. And really, it's the same negative criteria, but for the positive criteria, it really homes in on just one question, and can the site accommodate that height at a greater height than what the zoning consolidated? And it clearly can, you know, you put height restrictions in place to limit intensity, really to ensure consistency with development, you don't want that like seven-story building next to a two-story building that's gonna look very visually odd. So that's why you put height restrictions in place, it's not really an issue here, this is a monument sign where this got triggered because it's comparing it to an accessory freestanding sign. So it got kicked in because the freestanding sign is kind of your closest standard imperative, but it's a different product, so it's kind of subsumed really in the D1 variances there. And if you look at the I-1 zone, 45 feet is allowed, we're way under 45 feet, so if you actually match it to the principal height of the zone, we're, we're under that. So I think we, as a project, can absolutely accommodate this. Just again with the negative criteria, there's adequate light and air, you know, canyon effect is a thing where you don't want a tall building that creates that kind of weird canyon, that's not what this is. This is, you know, a monument side that you should, it'll be protected, it's not gonna be harmed by a tall building, it's, it's in line with that. So I think we beat the criteria for D6 variance. So I, I think I only have one or two slides left, so we'll, we'll get through it real quick. So municipal land use law, C variances, a couple of bulk variances here. I won't get too much into what the C1 is, because that talks about hardships, and I'm, I'm gonna go with C2 variance is the reason we can give bulk relief here. And that talks about like the specific property, and can you demonstrate that the purposes of zoning are still advanced despite any kind of deviations? And does the benefits outweigh the detriment? And really, I call it the flexible C2 variance because it's about flexibility and some of the discretion, is it a better alternative than what the zoning consolidated here? So pre-existing conditions were brought up in the planning support, so I just wanted to just address them really quick, and then I'll go into the four bulk variances. And I just wanna get this on record, because some of it is, you know, this is a building that's been there for a while, and it's not easy to get to the site plan. So I just wanna talk about the two things here, one was, there was mention that the minimum lot width of 300, where the property has less than 300 feet. The lot does have more than 300 feet on 206, and because of that notch, it kind of becomes a little weird on, on South Bridge Ave. As I said, there's almost like three little frontages hitting the road, but I believe, and I might turn to my engineer here, with what's on South Bridge Street and that notch, it, it approximately comes around 300 feet.
That's correct.
Okay, so kind of a technicality, no subdivisions proposed here. And then the other pre-existing non-conformity quote from the planner's report, requiring relief absent demonstration required approval, since this is just me kind of covering that relief in this testimony. Minimum front yard setback of 75 feet or 42.48 exists for the building. What you see here is a historic aerial that I went back to 1969, and the building was there, so we're talking 54 years this building's been here. I believe this is from the 206 frontage, and there's no change to that building, so we're just free requesting the relief for essentially a building that's been there for a very long time. So then the last variances, and then I'll conclude. So the four variances that were brought up in the report, the first one was about two freestanding signs for ones permitted. So again, this is a monument sign, it's not your typical freestanding sign, you do that kind of ordinance because you might have a commercial building that has, let's just say, five commercial tenants. You don't want them to all five have their own freestanding, you wanna consolidate all the, so it's about consolidation of signs. And because we're a monument sign, and it's not associated, it really actually goes to the other D1 variances of the second structure, we're not associated with that building. It's, it's really a C2 criteria here, that it's, it's a better alternative because the D, because it's subsumed in the D1, and it advances the purposes of zoning overall. And then the next variance here is about display surface, this is a 672 square footed area where 130 is required, 130 goes with accessory signage. So again, this is subsumed in the D1 variance because we're, I don't like to call it a billboard, but by definition, it's a billboard, which is a different standard. You know, you don't have 130 square foot billboards, that's just not how they, they come. And because there is no billboard regulation, I can't compare it to anything, but just to give you an example, you know, it's not your town, I just did this in Springfield, and they have conditional use of billboards where they're regulated at 1,000 square feet. So just to give you kind of a example of some town I recently worked with last week, and what their regulations regulate square footage. So 672 square feet really is not far off from what a billboard would be, so that's what I mean by it's subsumed in a D1. It's meant for advertising sign, it needs to be more visible, it's not a freestanding sign or weight finding, it's, it's a different product. So that's why the C2 I think can apply here. Then the third one is to permit five feet towards South Bridge Street where 15 feet is required. I'm gonna go back several slides just to grab the site plan. And I know it's small, but this was your site plan given to you, and this is just really coming from right here, that notch. I can pull up the site plan if you need it, but if you recall, our engineer testified to this, there's this like right-of-way land that's there, that we're five feet from the property line, but to that actual curb, it's, it's, I believe, 15, maybe even more feet, when we just turned by.
25 feet.
25 feet, so it's a technicality really because of the shape and how it just bends in like that. So we're just asking the board to look at that from C2 criteria, and perhaps even almost hardship, I don't wanna say it's a hardship C1, but it's, it's a weird block shape that that's not usual for. So that's why that variance exists. And I believe the engineer testified as to, you start cutting down more trees and start pushing it back, and it's probably more of a detriment to start pushing that. And then the last one is maximum coverage, permit 51.15% coverage where, where 50% is permitted, there's no increase to the building. And from what exists, it's less than 1% of an increase overall, we're putting landscaping, stormwater, and anything like that to offset impact, and we leave it at minimums, and our engineer also testified to this. And I have on my slide here about the waiver for the street tree requirement, but it sounds like during testimony tonight, we don't actually have that, or that at least has been dissolved at this time, so I'm not gonna have to do it. And that's really it, the same conclusion after thorough analysis of the site, your ordinance, your master plan, I find that the site is particularly suitable for this use variance. It's very consistent with your master plan, and it fulfills the positive and negative criteria for all the D variances, and there's gonna be no substantial impact to my professional plan. And that the fourth can legally approve the monument sign with variances.
Anyone from the board have any questions on the testimony just given? Just one question in connection with the waiver, are you saying you, you, they'll, they'll do the plantings, or they're sheeted waiver, or?
It sounds like, my understanding is for the street trees, we have 23, so we don't need a waiver.
That's right.
That's my understanding, I can be corrected if I'm wrong, but.
All right.
That's correct.
Correct, right, okay. So I, I don't think there's a waiver or variance needed because we have the 23, and 19 was required.
Yeah, the only thing is the fence, go back to that fence security.
Yeah, and I think the fence is four feet, so we're not requesting the variance at this time, I don't think the proposal is to go any higher than the four feet that's proposed at this time.
If a condition is to make it eight feet, or is it six feet, I'm sorry. I can put the C2 criteria on real quick, in that it is a safety request of the board, in that because it's like a decorative wrought iron, you usually don't wanna see six-foot like wood fences in your front yard, like blocking your house. Like that's, that's what an intent of a lower four-foot fence, but this is a front yard, but we're not talking like a residential character where there's gonna be a six-foot fence in your front yard, and that's gonna look really out of character. This is a industrial part of town, hunting these two major roads, and it's really about safety, and because the fence is very transparent, because it's a wrought iron fence, it's, visually, you're not gonna have that kind of impact, so it's a better alternative, should the board want it as a condition, for your safety request to keep out car passers.
Anyone else on the board have any questions? Anyone from the audience have any questions on the testimony just given?
I got one, what do you think of that master plan? What do you think of it?
I think it's good. I would say, I look at, our, our product is kind of so unique that a lot of master plans don't contemplate this most of the times, and most of the time, I'm saying why we're not inconsistent, rather than consistent. But what I can do tonight, because it's so specific about place making in 206, and having that gateway and place making, I feel it's actually very consistent.
You were thinking about this, weren't you, Mr. Paul? Come on.
Break his arm back.
Somerville's master plan is very concise, it's not five million pages, it tells you what the intents are, so it's very easy.
Okay, anyone, board have any comments? Anyone from the audience have any comments on the application, testimony that was given?
I do have one. I have a summary of the board's zoning plan. No? Two seconds? Two seconds, I promise. This application is for preliminary and final site planer, total with variances, to construct a monument display sign to be constructed in the front yard of subject property. Our testimony has shown that the design of the monument was a cooperative effort with borough officials.
Our testimony has shown that the design of the monument was a cooperative effort with borough officials, and is intended to be a nod to the borough's historical train station. The design was further modified to take into consideration the safety and security concerns raised by Mr. Cole during our meeting with him. The applicant has met both the positive and negative criteria for the variance relief requested, except for in detail by our planner's testimony. The applicant has addressed or will comply with all aspects of Mr. Cole's April 27, 2023 report. The proposed monument sign will serve as a stunning entrance at the gateway to Somerville, while also providing designated advertising space to the borough. For these reasons, we ask the board to approve our application. Thank you.
One more time, so anybody from the audience have any comments on this? Okay. Someone move to close the proportion of this application?
Come on.
Second or third?
Aye, aye.
What do you have for us, ma'am?
Well, the only, frankly, the only conditions that we've discussed are those that are set forth in the Cole's report. I, that is essentially, that is essentially what we condition the proof on. I would go on my opinion in terms of what has been proven, or what has not been proven, or?
Sure. Okay, does that fit? Yeah, we're going to discuss this here.
Yeah, I was going to say, I believe the applicant, I mean certainly, the board has a clarity to, if the board is in a slavery or opposed conditions, as it sees fit. Certainly in considering the proofs before the board, I do think that there is, that there has been a rather thorough case. And that the specific D1 criteria and D6 criteria have been met. And as the board is aware, the D1 criteria is under the Dichi, and I think that that has been met. But also in terms of bulk variances, if the board can determine independently that the use variance is, that the D1 variance is appropriate. The C2, I do not see any of this as a C1, counsel, I had to tell you that. I think that the, I think hardship is strong around to leave. The C2 variances could be brought in under the umbrella of the D1. So that would be my professional opinion. I do believe, you know, I certainly, Mr. Cole may, Mr. Cole may have differing, a different conclusion. And I believe the board, as I said, can impose appropriate conditions and beliefs. I think in terms of things like a generator, and, you know, we discussed what goes on. We don't, again, I use the term unseemly, but I mean, I do think that the board wants to make sure that if this were, if they were inclined to approve this, that this not would become a location that might be, you know, a place where there might be some danger, or there might be inappropriate... You know, you don't want it to turn into a place where perhaps people, you know, unfortunate people are living, or homeless people are living or suffering like this. I just want to make sure that the applicant did indicate that it has, that it has discussed with the board, has discussed with its own people, you know, an oversight, continuing oversight process for what is going on at the site. So this isn't something, and we would not want it to be something where it sits for months at a time, and nothing goes on, and it's just operating. So it appears that that, it appears that that will be taken care of. I believe that a condition that the board would want to, would want to oppose would certainly, you know, I think require that, require a certain level of oversight on a continuing basis in terms of the conditions of not only the apparatus, but the property and the fixtures themselves. No, I'm not, I was asked about, you know, what I thought, and I was giving, you know, just mine out. I'm just a lawyer here. At the end of the day, the board will make the decision, they can disregard everything I'm saying, and/or what Mr. Cole says. I'm just saying, I was asked about conditions. I, you know, those are conditions that I would certainly want to oppose, if the board were somehow inclined to approve it. Needless to say, if the board is not inclined to approve, the conditions are a moot issue.
Board was, what's the little break?
Be closing.
Yeah, we okay.
I'm going to go back to basics, and I'm having trouble. It's a sign, it's a billboard. I mean, I certainly, I call it, it's a sign, it's a billboard. And generally speaking, we don't want that around. And I go back to Lady Bird Johnson, that year at the wall.
Yeah.
So I'm having a real trouble, the word monument, the building, the train station, and all that. It looks very good visually, but that's not visually. So I'm having a real problem with that right now. As far as the emergency notices in the left of the town, nobody's driving down middle, the emergency notices, that's not going to happen.
Not doing a fluke.
And overall, if there were gateways, it'd be kicked around. My interpretation of the gateway is kind of these structures, kind of these real structures that were built in town. Right up on Main Street, to me, that's the gateway to the town. It's a place that's occupied, there's people there, there's business there, there's... This is a sorry. I think it's too big, people south of the street, it's massive, you know. I just don't, I'm not a happy camper, jogging up 206, coming across the bridge, everything is fine, the eagle's flying around. Big though, here's a sign. I just, I get, I'm not done yet, somebody else talk, that's the thing.
Chris? I'm thinking the same thing. I don't get the train count. The historic train station, I heard all night long, it's a law office.
God, now it's in the first truck. It's a restaurant.
My family's been here for hundreds of years, and never, it's known for courthouse, the hotel. Teddy Roosevelt speaking on the courthouse, and signing on the head of World War I down the street. The Wallace House, George Washington, that train station? I don't get it. It has nothing to do, no one will, I think people that know the area will say, what the heck is that? Train station? I mean, it makes no sense, but I want to put down a building, building, building. But the gateway to Vegas, maybe, but Somerville is not a billboard. That's how I feel.
It could be a firehouse, everyone.
But you're a firehouse, I mean, but the train station, the whole historic, I'm hearing it all night long, historic train house, train station. No one even knows what that is. It's a law office building, and whatever, it's been debated for years. I mean, it's not what people think, oh, they think it's not, oh, they don't think it trains at all. And, you know, I'm going back hundreds of years. All of my family's remember saying, oh, the train station, I've never heard that in my life.
Train, train.
So I don't get that argument, and that's fine. And just like what was said, Amber Alerts come over on my phone. That's about as prescient as a newspaper. I mean, Amber Alerts, any emergencies, I don't see that benefit to the town at all. I don't want to put it down, just saying that I don't think that argument works for me. For an emergency, I get it on my phone, I don't need it. So I don't, I don't think that, but yeah, same thing, gateway, that's the back entrance to Somerville. I almost would rather, I would almost prefer the looking glass pool or something like that. That to me just looks like a big box with, I don't know what these are, train station, I guess, but I don't get the train station thing. It's a nice building, but it is a billboard. And I just, I don't, I'm not happy. I mean, the debate, is it a monument, is it a billboard? For 112 seconds out of two minutes, it's a billboard. For eight seconds out of two minutes, it's a monument. It's a welcome to Somerville, or whatever we want it to be. So my, my internal struggle is, is that enough? Call it a monument, eight seconds, eight seconds out of two minutes. Is that, is that, because otherwise, yeah, otherwise, I mean, a monument is the Brooklyn Bridge. A monument is the Washington Monument, but it's not advertising on that. So the moment you take a monument and you put advertising on it, it doesn't work. You start to diminish the monument. So that's my internal debate, as to, is it really eight seconds out of two minutes? Does that make it a, is it really a monument, or is it just a billboard? I think it's a real nice billboard. I don't want to, you know, I'm not trying to trash on what it is. It's a real nice advertisement, yes it is, and I think that's so much better than what you see. I get it, I'm just saying that it doesn't represent the whole meaning.
It's a billboard, it's a billboard.
And the question comes, do you want a billboard?
Yeah.
There, that's it. That's what really has to be decided on.
That's what I'm saying, isn't it? By and large, I don't think, as a rule, we want billboards anyway.
I think there's, I think it's a dead advertisement, actually, you know, a billboard isn't it?
True?
I don't like it. I mean, that's just the bottom line. I think it's, it's, Mount Rushmore is a monument, this is advertising. So let's, like, as my colleagues have said, let's call it what it is. It's advertising, somebody's going to make money on it, and that's fine. But it's not a monument. I don't think it represents Somerville, but I understand you worked with the governing body, and they think it does, and that's okay. I think it's out of place, it's too big. I don't think it enhances Somerville in any way, shape, or form, as my colleagues have said. If you're having an emergency in Somerville, you're not going to South Bridge Street to find out about. You're going to, you know, hear the emergency vehicles, you're going to get one of the calls from the police station. I don't see the point of it, I just don't. I wish I could, I don't see the point of it at all.
I'll talk to you guys a little bit. So I travel like root every day, and as I sat there today, and as I make my left, I'm going to be right. That's a terrible corner. If that's, if that's one of the gateways in the town, it doesn't give us a very nice walk. Obviously, this is a very large structure. I think it's a combination advertisement, a combination structure. I think with the intent of our council to make something, I'm glad to put the place there, I have no idea. I'm bordering here, I think our demographics are changing greatly in town. I think we're having more upstairs restaurants in town, I think you're seeing a larger scale, or Somerville on the horizon, as you know. I had to laugh a little bit, I talked about a seventh story structure. If you look, our Main Street now is lopsided. One side's high, one side's low, blocks the sun. But it definitely is, our town's definitely changing. I think as, most of us have been in the town a very long time, like, having said that, I kind of like this all of a sudden. I kind of like what it looks like there. I like the fact that it's now, it's a little lane for our border there. I think it, a lot of people travel past that spot, and I think you're going to see, oh, wait, they have this restaurant in town, or, you know, this is going on Division Street. This is, so, you know, being on a Friday night, being here on, driving through town the other night when they had ladies' night, watching town bustle, it's kind of cool. It really is kind of cool.
I mean, if, if it was, if it was one minute out of two minutes, and for that one minute, you could talk about ladies' night, you could talk about stuff going, tour of Somerville and stuff like that. And someone out of life has a good chance of seeing something about town happening.
And I got to tell you.
Then I think, then I think, I think it works.
I never hit two greens there, ever. It's a little dukes with the red light, and I sit at South Bridge Street.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, I'm sorry, I mean, you know. No, I, you know, I think, I think we obviously have, if this were to be approved, as a condition of the group, it would increase our time there.
Yeah, then it becomes more of a monument.
I just, I, I struggle with this one a lot. It's a tough one, because for reasons stated, you know, the historic train station doesn't resonate with me like as a cultural monument of Somerville. With that said, I think that's another corner too. And there might be something here to help the town. I'm not, I, I, I take issue with the aesthetics of it in certain regards, but that's not my place right now. I, I guess it's just, to me, I just don't see this making real negative detrimental impacts in that corner, you know?
You know, I don't think, you know, it's outside the residential realm. I don't think, you know, it's not affecting anybody, honestly. And I think it's kind of where we're struggling with is, you know, you see that sign, like, that's huge, that's a big, big building. I mean, Mr. Peabody spoke, that's bigger than his house.
But the thing is, I mean, what some of you are saying is, it's an unattractive corner. So, okay, let's, let's just say, okay, it's an unattractive corner. But should we settle for this? Or should we say, why don't we try to find an alternative? Or ask the governing body to find an alternative to this, so that we have choices?
No, I didn't want to interrupt.
Okay, so I'm just saying.
I, I, I suggest something, Mr. Chairman, before the board, before the board takes any action. You're giving the applicant an opportunity to hear the very legitimate thoughts the board has and concerns with respect to the application. Perhaps you give the applicant an opportunity to caucus, or speak to its professionals, and see what can be done about it. And the board definitely could, you know, that's certainly not unreasonable in the circumstances.
I mean, I'm not slamming, no. It's just that this...
Well, what I'm hearing is the aesthetics are important, a lot of board members have concerns with the aesthetics.
I grew up with a train station.
I understand.
But the thing is, it's too big. I would almost prefer just a billboard. Put it lower, put it in something that's sized to that corner. I mean...
With fountains and everything else, to not have this gigantic representation.
Yeah, I mean, it's just too big. Because we're voting tonight, I'm not so far in it.
Yeah.
It might be a little bit warm.
Yeah, yeah, it's very, it's very imposing. So it's not welcoming, it's imposing, if they will, think about it a little bit.
Mr. Chairman, may I suggest that perhaps we take a five-day break from here? And it'll give the applicant an opportunity, counsel, or review.
I'd agree, thank you, sir.
And, you know, and people, and we can get a rest, and go from there, we have our application after this show, so. I don't want anybody tripping on my cane, that's the worst thing.
Nobody the worst.
If you're like, you have to be, you have to answer.
I will tell you.
We have to get this. I asked for that.
Good, we did. You know, it seems it's insane. Because car doors are really easy to.
I'm gonna take a walk outside. Do you want to come for a minute? Or no?
Yeah, the final, I'm not sure. Nobody submitted your as though, I'm not sure.
You put off like, what does that do? It's like, it's nothing, it's gonna do that. Turn a little bit circle. Because I, I just have a creation.
So I think, like, we're saying we're headed on the second floor. I just showed you just to get some clues where they are, as I say.
Yes, thank you very much for that. I appreciate it. Yes, we had an opportunity to, um, to talk with our, the applicant, and we appreciate the time. The applicant would like to make a request if it was.
Yes, I appreciate you so much. We genuinely appreciate the feedback and understanding that there's a concern over the aesthetic. I ask it be that we can get carried to the following meeting and receive some feedback this evening from the board as to what you feel best reflects the aesthetic of Somerville and how we can incorporate that into a new design. And then we'll take that feedback and create a few different design options and meet with your engineer, Mr. Cole, and whoever else, whatever, whoever other township professionals you feel should be present at that meeting to go over those new design options and integrate any feedbacks that you have that haven't been addressed tonight that you've given Mr. Cole and, you know, feedback from your township professionals into a final new design. We'll submit a revised site plan in time for the next meeting and come back and suggest the, the new design based off of the input that we received this evening from your professionals in a technical review. My additional ask would be that we not have to bring back our traffic engineer, just given that, you know, the testimony would otherwise be the same. And so long as we're not requesting any other variances, same with our planner. And lastly, if so long as we're not, you know, doing anything too drastically different to footprint aside from it's going to be, like, if it's smaller, we won't have the train track type situations going all the time. You know, we don't have to bring back our, or we don't bring back our, our site engineer. It absolutely need it.
So would someone like to make a motion that we continue this?
A second.
A second, one favor.
Aye, aye.
opposed? Okay.
Is there any additional feedback from, from the board?
One of us.
Yes.
Well, what I would suggest is, why don't you go over to the Somerville Public Library and go into the New Jersey Room and do a little research about the town. There's a lot of historic documentation in there. We truly did have George Washington stay here. We have the Wallace House and the old Dutch parsonage. We have one of the, a library that's gone back to revolutionary times. It's not obviously where it is now, but we had a lending library during the revolution. The hotel. The hotel is oldest cavern in the nation. If you look at the Somerset County Courthouse, and I was saying to my colleagues, have you visited every courthouse, every county seat in New Jersey in one day? We have a magnificent courthouse here in Somerville. You've got the Lord Fountain, which is right by the courthouse. And so I would suggest you do a little research into the community. Also, from my point of view, the sign is too big. The sign itself is too big. And I think it should be lower. So I think you have a lot to consider, but do a little work.
We don't think of bike races.
The bike races.
Maybe a, you know, a couple little TV statues. You don't, you don't think, print do what you want, but it's like, you know, a bike race. Plus, the bike races in Bronn, maybe that's the home of the courthouse. Then people go, oh, that's Somerville.
Come to the bike races on Memorial Day.
I'm just saying that, yeah, they're not, they're, they're crossed by this, this, they won't know that that's Somerville at all.
Or I've heard of two courthouse three times now. Is it fair to say the courthouse should maybe be the centerpiece of a little more?
Maybe just a dome. A dome, a dome. And the bike races are, they run right by in front of that courthouse. So I mean, a shot of bike race, of the bike race in the courthouse, and go, that's Somerville.
You know, like thirty years ago, the borough had a borough credit card because at that time it was popular for towns to offer credit cards to their constituents. And what, what did they decide to put on it? A bicycle from the bike races. So I think you need, you need to do some research.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Luckily, you have digital media. They can incorporate all that into the sign, showing it.
I, I mean, and that's.
Paul Robeson, who graduated from Somerville High School.
I mean, that's it. The, the structure itself doesn't necessarily need to encompass all those things. If Somerville had more time on the screen to show the courthouse, to show Robeson, to show bike races.
Robeson.
Robeson, sorry. So then, so, I mean, so, I mean, Hick, or my son Frank, Hick the design, take those train things off and, and just give us more time to show off the town.
The dawn of a top.
Real quick, let's go to our train station. If you go to the train station, there's a tunnel under the tracks, there's mosaics here and show a lot of different aspects of Somerville. You might want to just spend ten minutes walking there.
Talk to the historic condition.
You're making them look like the train stations.
I think that's.
Definitely a television. I think that's the past and the future is like Division Street, the vibrancy downtown.
Yeah.
So the past, I think, good comments, but if you look at the Division Street and some of the photos from Division Street, and all these, I stayed at Hartnow in the wintertime with a holiday tree, and in the summer, all the festivals are there, and all the, all gatherings. So what's great in Somerville where it is is downtown. It's not the train station today. It's the vibrancy of it downtown is what makes it, is a place of destination. So we can get some, in my opinion, deal with historic nature, but look at the vibrancy and where Somerville's going to this downtown that we're getting stayed with the Destination Street, right?
Yeah.
Me too.
We'll give a technical review with you to put this television designs and.
Yeah, I mean, we, I think that's where the board's going is, uh, talking different concepts that anchor where the town was and where it's going. Kind of encompass that.
So I'd like to follow that, and would be, excuse me, you would be then, that would be a tool we'd like to finalize what that design will look like ultimately? Because we're gonna have a change over by site planning and design. So is there anyone else aside from yourself? Or, and this question's to the board. Is there anyone else besides Mr. Cole or me that?
The proponent should just be you, yes. One, one procedure I wish you to, I had discussed this with, with your attorney. We're not in danger, if we only carry it to the fourteenth, we're not in danger of this being considered a default approval. I would like your consent on the record that you will extend the time for consideration as long as it's necessary for this to be.
Yes.
Effectuated and finalized.
Yes, we ran an extension.
All right, very good. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not like a stigmatizer. I'm not trying to, no way. You know, it's, you know, it's like, to like what I would say, too. Of course, I mean, what it looks like now, it doesn't work.
Sure.
No, I said.
I mean, the corner, you know, the corner's like, you know, so it's like, hey, great. Just let's make sure anything works.
That was understood. You know, we went off of the certain direction that we had. Obviously, the, we were for her first, the, you know, they are not in place, and so we want to make sure that your feedback is added later.
We always have the cemetery. There's a second one, listening to the cemetery in the state.
So we will, we will definitely work with Mr. Cole. We're gonna redesign, and we'll come back to the board with something that we hope you all will love. And then, Ms. Rivens, so we will be carried to June fourteenth. No further notice will be provided.
Great. Ladies and gentlemen in the audience, the application, the application of Somerville Land Holdings LLC for one through two oh six and South Bridge Street, lot one twenty-three, lot eleven oh one, will be adjourned from this meeting and will be held, and, and me will resume my. Will be adjourned from this meeting and will be held, and, and the meeting will resume on June fourteenth in this location at, at seven PM. It will be scheduled for seven PM. There will be no further public notice of this meeting. Please be guided accordingly.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for your time. Oh, one, one more, Ms. Administrator. We keep the, we'll keep the board, we leave it up to you?
No.
No? We take those? Oh, yeah, that's right. That's true. Yeah.
The other one?
Yes.
Can we get a storm drive for all the existing?
Yes. So you have a storm drive of all the, everything?
Good evening, members of the board, members of the public, professionals. My name is David Singer. I am an attorney with Portio, Bronberg, and Newman. And I'm here tonight representing our client, Richard and Sarah, of Palomos. I will try and prepare the meeting as brief as I can. It's hard for lawyers to do that, but I will do my best. We're really here tonight because this is a site plan exempt application. So we're here for variance approval to rebuild the prior home that was destroyed by fire. The home is located, as you know, at one thirty-one Eastern Avenue. This is an important project for my client, especially Sarah, who lived in this house and welcomed her first child into this home. And it's important for Somerville that will allow the rebuilding of this residential property in a location that, you know, really has gone rebuilt in a, over a period of time. The rebuilding of the previous home will be consistent with the footprint of the previously destroyed home. And the garage and driveway, which is currently on the property, will not be altered with this project. As part of this application, the applicant is seeking approval for the following relief. Minimum lot area, minimum lot width, minimum lot frontage, maximum improvement coverage, maximum floor area ratio, minimum front yard setback, side yard setback, driveway width, side yard garage, and location of garage. It is important to note that this property will look the same as it did before the fire in terms of size and location. The reason we're here is because of the amount of the property needs to be rebuilt versus just making some alteration to the property. Tonight you will hear testimony on behalf of the applicant by our planner and engineer, Mr. Joe Vince, and our architect, Mr. Ralph Finelli, explaining the reconstruction and why the variance required for the reconstruction meet the requirements of the Somerville ordinances and municipal land use law and should be granted. The granting of this application will allow the applicant to proceed with the demolition and reconstruction of this property as soon as possible. We already have a builder, insurance is already involved, and are ready to go as soon as approval, we hope, is granted. At this time, I'd like to call up my first witness, Ralph Finelli, our architect.
Evening, sir. You saw me sort of the testimony you were about to give in this matter. It will be the truth to help you guide.
I did.
Do you state your name and spell your last name?
Ralph Finelli, F-A-R-I-N-E-L-L-I. I live in Tygress, is here, lot one forty-four, in Surgesville, New Jersey. I am licensed in the state of New Jersey since nineteen eighty-seven, particularly since nineteen eighty-four, and have practiced since nineteen eighty-seven. I appeared before this board a few years ago when we reopened the sign of Oz and a couple dozen others, and you have to say with your.
I'd like to have the board approve this witness's evidence. Thank you.
Okay, the drawings before you are the same drawings you have submitted. They're not rendered, they're not colored, they're the exact same.
Same thing you filed?
Same thing you filed, and so everybody can see this, I'm gonna go through this pretty quickly. First page is the existing elevation, the elevation of the building pre the fire event. Second page is the floor plan of the same building. We did get in there with the builder very shortly after the fire, so we were able to walk through the project, measure it, so we know exactly what the room sizes were, where the windows were, what the pieces of the house were. And page three is the proposed elevation, and page four is the proposed floor plan. What we're doing is rebuilding the exact same footprint on the exact existing foundation. It is our very intention to save the foundation. We've been in there a couple of times since the event. The concrete block foundation is in pretty good shape, whether it was a fire event or just a, a garden variety addition alteration to a home. We're not gonna know a hundred percent how suitable that foundation is until we pull the frame off. At that point, we'll be able to reassess it. If we have to reinforce it, we'll reinforce it. Would not be uncommon to have to, you know, replace maybe the top couple of courses of the block, but the foundation wall is staying in that location. We're building a new frame top on top of that. There's a couple of things that we're going to improve. You know, the original house is, I think, nineteen oh eight or nineteen ten. The front porch on, on this building, I think there's five or six in a row that were the same patterned house. The owner has told us that this was a Sears home, so I'm sure you've all heard that in and around the borough and in the area. They were, they were pretty common. Some of these homes, the porch has been finished, some have not been finished, some have hip roofs, some have cable roofs. We're making a very slight modification to the front elevation and putting a cable roof on that rather than a hip. That's really the only visual change. It's still eight foot ceiling heights, floor to floor. There's nothing, you know, there's nothing about this house honestly that's going to look different than when it was built in nineteen ten, except it's gonna be cleaner, hopefully straighter. Everything is gonna be up to construction standards and code standards today. We've got a couple of little square foot changes. The energy code is gonna require a few six inch exterior walls. There are changes, a few little things inside the house. But basically, it was a three bedroom house before, it's a three bedroom house now. There are a few questions that Mr. Cole raised in his, in his review letter. We have a black roof, gray siding, white trim. End of story. They're all double hung windows, separate porch replacement windows. The basement is not gonna be finished. The attic is probably gonna be stick framed. It's uninhabitable, not usable, except maybe an air handler or something like that. We don't propose any finishes up there. Yes, there'll be access from a pull down stair. I probably can't talk much faster, but I think those are the nuts and bolts of what, the questions that were raised in the report. If there's anything else specifically that you'd like me to address, I'm happy to.
I'm gonna have you address some others. Just talk a minute about the decking material that you're gonna use and also talk about the rain.
So yes, of course, the house had gutters on it. Now, this is a presentation drawing. It doesn't have all the construction. So yes, we have rain gutters and downstouts. Our impervious coverage, our footprint is exactly the same. These downstouts will go to the ground. There is no other recharge area proposed. The engineer will talk about that in a minute. But we do have gutters and downstouts. The exterior deck will be a synthetic material. Not really sure which one it's gonna be, but it will not be wood. And obviously, the superstructure is specially created lumber, but the deck material will be a synthetic, like an AZAC or TimberTech or one of those, one of those. Same thing with the railing. It will be a synthetic manmade material. Zero to low maintenance, that's really the idea. It wear very well. I'm sure you're all familiar with those products.
Any questions for the architect?
Anybody have any questions? Ask it to Finelli.
Two. What's the height of the basement?
The basement, the existing basement is nominally eight feet, so it's well across the block. It will, it will not be finished. The mechanical stuff down there, it'll remain mechanical stuff, you know.
And how about the garage? Was that damaged in the fire? It was not.
You have one upstairs. You're gonna go with it? I guess that, that bedroom. You going out a little bit more now, the structure?
On the, on the rear of the house.
Yeah.
On the rear of the house, we did the, right, second floor, there's a breakfast, existing breakfast move behind the kitchen on crawl space. First floor is a little bit different, but we did take that same footprint and, and instead of the wall stopping there, we did fill that out. And a lot of that was re-proofing, you know, taking, not a big footprint, obviously, but we've got the four inch exterior wall. Now we're losing, you know, two inches concentrically all the way around, so we just had to, you know, put that back in some habitable space.
There's not many walk-in closets on Eastern Avenue.
Yeah, yeah.
They used to change the roof from a hip to a gable, right?
Same to a gable, right.
So it's the same height.
Same, same pitch, right.
Same pitch, same everything. So you're losing the door mark and you're putting the sink.
Anyone from the audience having questions? I'll just Finelli.
I was a concern.
Just questions on the testimony.
Okay, okay. It's in regards to the foundation because, because the houses are over a hundred years old. And this, you know, it's been sitting for a year and a half, collecting water and everything else. I know what my, I, I live two doors down. I know what my foundation looks like, you know, cracks and, and such, and even the flooring. And now, and that was not damaged by fire, so.
What's the, what's the nature of the question?
So the question is, is, is that foundation buildable? I mean, on top of it, you know, is it gonna sustain a house?
Sure. So I did answer that previously. Visually, it looks, it looks in suitable shape. We'll know more when we pull the frame off of it. If it has to be reinforced, we'll reinforce.
Visually, what do you, I think, would help? When were you last out there to inspect, to locate it?
Maybe three weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago.
Yeah, I, my understanding by the building code is a design professional is gonna have to certify that the foundation is suitable. Should the board grant approval. I think it's a UCC requirement for reusing it.
Correct. No more with the framing.
Right, so that'll be addressed against after demolition.
With construction.
Right, right. And again, not to stop me if there's more information that you need, but New Jersey has a rehabilitation subcode as part of the Uniform Construction Code. It's designed specifically for situations like this, for repairing something. So there's reconstruction, repair, renovation, alteration. All those definitions are in there and they're all at our disposal. So we will make sure that it's safe, obviously.
Anyone else? Yes.
Yes.
Put it record, your name.
Could you please identify yourself?
My name is Jennifer Bruder. I live at one thirty-three Eastern Avenue, so I'm the next door neighbor. Can you please elucidate how exactly you intend to reinforce the foundation if in fact, as we all expect, we will not be able to withstand a brand new house of this size?
Well, we'll know when we get there.
But how we reinforce it, is my question.
The same testimony I did five minutes ago. We will either add pile asters, reinforce the block, maybe replace the top two courses of the block. There's any number of means at our disposal to reinforce the, the foundation that's there.
And how will that affect the standing structures on either side of it, both being, for example, both sides are here?
There's no effect on the standing structures at all.
I don't understand how that's possible.
I don't understand how it's possible.
But how would you?
They're gonna build a house. Let's just go right to the beginning. Let's say there was nothing there and I wanted to dig a hole, build a foundation.
Right.
That's gonna affect you far more than taking the foundation off and just, taking the frame off and just rebuilding a foundation. It's a construction project.
Exactly. It's a construction project. That's gonna cause major, that's gonna cause major disruption for our lives. So if you could, please provide a little more information as to.
I don't think we argumentated, but I'm gonna answer as clearly as possible. It's a construction project. That's what it is. It, it will have no effect on your foundation. It'll have no effect on your framing, on your window. It has no effect on your, on your property. Why would it have an effect on your property?
I think it's with the next door neighbors. I don't understand.
I think he's answered the question.
No, I, I was gonna say, I think you're gonna ask and answer. Real quick to the public, as they get testimony, you can ask questions about the testimony at the end of all the testimony. You can say whatever you want. And so you can, any concerns, you can address the board. Just, just as a note, construction, someone's been in construction for a while now. That house, what it went through, the fact that it's still standing is a testament to good construction back in the day. That house built today would have gone to ground. It actually would have gone to ground.
That probably would have been a lot easier for the neighbors who have been living next door than that.
Right, we have a family. Unfortunately, I live right down the street, so.
But we're the direct neighbors. We just bought our house a year ago. We are the direct neighbors.
So the, the, the code as it is right now will address all the concerns that you're having. They have, there's a standard they have to live up to. It's gonna have inspections, they're gonna have, the engineers come out and certify things. That house won't, shouldn't, and won't affect the neighbor's houses during construction, post-construction. Mr. Finelli is an architect. He's telling you, he's gonna make sure that.
The rent defense that's already up has been bothering our house too. You know, also, I mean, you say this now, I don't.
Every month, I've been asking a construction official, why is the house still standing?
So if I.
I, I a hundred percent agree. I wanna make sure that your concerns are met.
Should the board have granted approval, the board will contemplate putting in timelines to take the structure down in a timely fashion. I'm sure the board will entertain that.
If it's required. Mr. Finelli, anything else? Any more questions for Mr. Finelli?
No questions for this witness.
I'm empty by twenty-five Reaver. I live behind the house. My only question is, you brought up how the gutters will be stipulated and where they will drain.
Yeah, the engineer will answer directly. They're gonna determine where they drain.
You're here?
Engineer will answer it specifically, sure.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Finelli.
With that, I'd like to call up Mr. Joseph Vince, our engineer and planner.
Could you, I'd like to swear your name. Evening, sir. You saw me sort of the testimony you were about to give in this matter. It will be the truth to help you guide.
Yes.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
First name is Joseph, last name is Vince, V-I-N-C-D.
Very good. Counselor, would you qualify your witness, please?
Thank you. Mr. Vince, can you please tell the board your educational background and what licenses you currently?
Sure. I have a bachelor's science degree from Fairleigh Dickinson University in civil engineering technology. I also have a bachelor's science degree from NJIP in land surveying. Been practicing as an engineer, land surveyor, and planner since two thousand and five, licensed in all three professions. Been testifying before numerous boards for many years, including the first one. I was here a few years back for use variance. I've also been at Bridgewater, Mandville, Bransford, some of the neighbors.
I'd like to have the board to accept Vince as a planning and engineer. To the extent I'm not already covered by Mr. Finelli, can you please address any outstanding planning comments in Mr. Cole's memory?
Sure. Well, just to wrap up some of the engineering items. I guess one of the questions was about the rain gutters. There is no storm drain system in front of that property. So we would discharge the downstouts onto the grade and that's currently what they're doing. And that's basically how the drainage of the property goes. And we're not increasing the impervious areas or anything that would increase the, the regular volume of stormwater well from the property. We're not proposing any grading on the site. I'm gonna refer you here to a copy of the plan. The plan that everybody got in their packages. And really, the only, there's really no site disturbance whatsoever where we're gonna call out the house. Reconstruct the frame structure on top of the foundation. As the architect testified, if discovered that some repairs to the foundation are necessary, we would make those necessary repairs. We don't know exactly what they would be until we determine what the problems would be, if, or any. We're proposing to maintain the driveway. There's currently a driveway that leads to the rear yard. There is a frame garage at the rear of the property. is a frame garage at the rear of the property. I was there, the garage appears to be in good condition. And we would be reconstructing the deck and the staircase. So there'd be no grading of the site proposed, and really no changes in terms of the grading or the drainage. There was a question about the utilities. Right now, the utilities are overhead. The utility lines are on the western side of the property. There is a pole, but the poles are located in front of the neighboring houses, so I don't think it's gonna be feasible to put the utilities underground just because of where the pole locations are. But if it's possible, we'll, we'll try, but ultimately, it's gonna be up to the utility companies as to how the power and communication services come into the house. As far as other engineering items, we saw that there is, I agree that the sidewalk's not level. The trees eat the sidewalk. The roots will fix the sidewalk. It's gonna happen to the tree, it's a pretty big tree, and the roots are gonna still be there, but we will do that. And we don't have a problem. We do plan to reuse the existing sanitary sewer lateral. May take it to the cleanout, but we will televise the line and make sure it's in good working order. And we have no problem putting a note on there that if we damage any sidewalks, we'll fix them. As far as the variances, there are several variances with this application. I believe a lot of them are pre-existing non-conforming conditions, but we can, we'll testify to them. We have the lot area, the lot width, and the lot frontage. This is an undersized lot. The lot was created by subdivision. There was a file map in 1919. The map was prepared in 1915. So the lot has existed in its current condition since 1919, and the tax records say that that existing house was constructed in 1925. I did try to do some research. I could not determine when the first Somerville zoning ordinance was created, so assuming the house was there before the first ordinance, but I can't say that with 100% certainty. But certainly, the lot has been occupied by a structure it's been lived in, so it was a lawfully existing structure. So I do believe that the lot, the lot variances are pre-existing non-conforming conditions. As far as rebuilding the structure, everything is a bulk variance. We need a variance for, I'll just go through them for the record. We'll just say lot area, lot width, lot frontage, maximum improvement coverage. We have 57.6%, where 40 is required. We have a FAR variance, which is a D variance. I'll get back to that one. We have a front guard setback variance, 22 feet, where 25 feet is required. Side yard variances, 3.4 feet exists on the, the northerly side, where minimum of eight feet is required. Then we have a combined side yard of 17.7 feet, where 20 feet is required. And we have a driveway width variance. However, I'll talk about that one again. I think that's a pre-existing non-conforming condition. And we do have a variance for the size of the garage. Currently, our garage is 22.7% of the gross floor area, where a maximum of 20% is required, so the garage exceeds that by approximately 40 square feet. And the location of the garage, and we have a rear yard setback of 48 feet and a side yard setback of 1.2 feet, or 5 feet are required in both of those yards. All the variances can be granted under the C1 variance criteria. That's the hardship variance. And because, reason of exceptional narrowness, shalliness, or shape of a specific piece of property, certainly the lot width variances are related to the, the width of the property. The house right now is approximately 22 feet wide, and the lot is 40 feet wide. And if you went and you took out what the combined side yard is at 20 feet, you'd only be less than a 20-foot house. And that is pretty narrow. And that's not just with today's building standards, but I, you know, townhouse units and things like that are usually minimum, you know, 20 foot, maybe a little bit wider, so, you know. But certainly, all these variances are also by reason of extraordinary exceptional situation uniquely affecting a specific piece of property, the structures lawfully existing thereon. These structures were lawfully existing, and they do exist. So to now go and remove the foundations where this was damaged by a fire, if the fire didn't occur, we, we wouldn't be before the board looking to rebuild the house. We're, we're not here putting a new house. It's a new house, but we're not even looking to change it. We're just trying to rebuild it. So to go and have to remove those foundations and move them over a few feet is certainly creating a practical hardship, and it's compounding the hardship that this applicant has already been through. And not just economically, just from the point of the, the foundation's good, there's no reason to poison it. So I think all those variances can be under the C1. As far as the garage and the coverages, we're not proposing to change them. They do exist. So I, as, we have no reports that it's affecting any of the neighboring properties, so I don't see any substantial detriment on the public good by maintaining what used to exist at this property. There's not gonna be change. It's not like we're building something new that's gonna impose on the neighborhood. We're just maintaining what's already been there. Not changing the height of the structure. And then as far as the D variance, which is the floor area ratio variance, we are, we are slightly increasing the second story by 82 square feet, and that's what is triggering the variance, where it does conform today. But we're proposing a floor area ratio of 30.7%, so we're over by 34 square feet. So that's less than what our proposed increase is. Now, if you look, the standard for the floor area ratio variance is that the site can accommodate any problems associated with an increased floor area ratio. I don't see any problems as a result. It was a three-bedroom house before the fire, and then we're proposing a three-bedroom house. And if you look at the architectural plans, the house was built in 1925, or in 1920, and the standards of living have increased slightly, or have changed in, I guess, 100 years since then. So if you look at the second floor, this would be the expansion. And as the architect testified, we are losing 30 square feet within the house just because we have to go to two-by-six walls versus the two-by-fours. But these rooms are very modest. They're nine-by-nine bedrooms. They're very, you know, they're pretty small. But we're, we're adding an increased size closet and just doing things like that to just meet more modern-day standards, and that's basically what the increased floor area ratio is. But the bottom line is that slight increase in the floor area ratio, it's not increasing the footprint, and it will not generate any problems due to the increased floor area ratio. The project as a whole is furthering goals of the municipal land use law, which also are the purposes of your zoning ordinance. We're encouraging municipal action to guide appropriate use. They're all gonna live in a manner of promote public health, safety, moral, general welfare. I have pictures of the site if, if anyone's interested in seeing them, but I'm not gonna pass them out if you don't want them, just to speed this along, but.
Well, where are they?
Yeah, the property is an eyesore, so just allowing the property to be rebuilt at this point in time is a, a good thing for the public. And also creating a better visual environment. And we're providing adequate airlife and open space. We're not changing. We're maintaining what's currently there, and all of the houses in the area are very similar in style. Setbacks are all very similar. It was all developed around the same period of time. And I did look at the master plan. I don't see any substantial detriment in the master plan or the zoning ordinance. In fact, the master plan discusses preserving existing neighborhoods. Obviously, having a burnt house in the middle of the neighborhood is not doing that, so this project of rebuilding it in a fashion that's consistent with the other houses is, is consistent with the goal of the master plan. So for all those reasons, I think the variances can be granted, and I don't see any substantial detriment on the public good or the, the master plan as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Vince. Anyone from the board have any questions on Mr. Vince?
One question, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Vince, did you, you may not know this, the director of the attorney does. Since you're seeking C1 relief, was there any investigation as to whether there was additional property could be available for conveyance or purchase that would enable the property to commit, commit to conformance with the requirements of the zone?
I mean, I would say that based upon the site constraints.
Right, that's true. Well, I'm just making the record. Based upon what the map says, I would agree, but I, but I have to answer.
Mike, can you talk a little bit about the drainage?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know that, since it's not a site plan, there's not spot drains out there, so I don't know how the stormwater runoff occurs. And it's basically, I would say the board, both boards policy to get the storm out of the street to the extent possible. So I'm not worried about a catch base, I'm on a curb base discharge. And since the sidewalks had to be leveled, they might be out of the way if you get at least some of the roof leaders to the street.
Oh, I didn't see any others on the street, so I didn't know that that was allowed.
Yeah, I, I don't know. You might get comments about the stormwater runoff. But if there's, if the runoff is going on the adjacent property to the extent possible, the board would like to see that mitigating. So we can get some, I'm not saying, I understand that we might not be able to gravity, get the roof leaders from the rear of the property, but if we get the roof leaders from the front to the curb face discharge, that prevents icing potentially in the winter, and potentially reduce the runoff onto neighboring property.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try our best, and.
I, I just don't have the grades.
No, to the extent possible, the applicant would agree to make that a condition, if we can.
We'll try our best, and if we can't, we'll, we'll have a meeting with you out there, and if we can't, we can't, but we'll try.
And the other benefit is the sump pump now has a discharge location that's not on grass causing.
Okay.
If, if there's a high water table, and you do have a sump pump, you know, the code today says you have to put a sump pump in the basement.
Right.
And this, I'm not saying it's gonna be active, but if it is active, at least you have a discharge point that doesn't.
Yeah, we could try to do that. I just didn't see any others, so I didn't realize that that was gonna be allowed. But some municipalities allow it to occur, and some don't, so.
Well, it's.
We'll try, yeah.
The issue with tight lots, obviously, is there's a lot of drainage problems. You have tight soils, soils and clays, so.
I understand. So just, just to clarify, we're on very quickly, I understand, but the condition would be that they'll, you know, stormwater damage will be done to your, to yours satisfaction, or?
Yeah, we'll work that out. Traditionally, it'd be a plot plan.
Okay.
Plot plan. If using the, the foundation, the argument was the plot plan, the plot plan would be the roof leaders then. To show what you're gonna do with the roof leaders. That'd be the only condition I see, should the board agree with that and grant approval. Just showing the grades or showing something, and it's not, if there's no grade, the pitch is totally wrong, we can't do it, it can't be done. But if we have to pick up some grades, and we can pick up at least some of that water.
I think you put the condition of that we will work with the town to try and satisfy to the extent we can.
Right.
The condition of the property office.
That's fine. I just wanna try to.
I agree with that.
Flat ground here.
I know, that's why. I couldn't see it from the road. You can't tell. Obviously, the neighbors will notice where the runoff is, but from, from the street with the big fence around it, you can't tell. And to me, it doesn't appear the runoff right now is onto the street. I don't think it's on a neighbor's property, but.
It might be. It's hard to tell because the grass hasn't been mowed.
Well, I don't, you know. I'm sure some of the neighbors will address.
So we'll, we'll do what we can with it. We'll make a determination. Do you want grades on the plan, or if we could go there and visually see it's gonna make it to the street and show the?
You can just give me, we'll work, well, it's not, I think the pressing need, at least from what I'm hearing, is to get this project moving quickly, to get the existing structure down, and to get the property back to use. So we're gonna work this out in a very, it's not gonna be a paper case here, in my opinion. The other, other comment I had is to televise in Somerville, the property owners require the roof, the lateral to the main, not just to clean out. So we can just run that camera an extra 20 feet.
Yeah.
Is it, I don't see that.
That's all.
That's fine, yeah.
The MOU has been interpreted where a house has been destroyed by fire or other natural causes, that, you know, the, the policy is generally interpreted in favor of rebuilding it in place, which is what you're doing. So I just thought the board would know that, too. That's, that's, that's one of the fundamental policies, the MOU.
I mean, if you're out there with a transit booth, go out and be up there and say bang, bang, boom, this is where it is, move forward. I mean, you have to be the longest, youngest surveyor licensed in the state right now.
One of them.
I'm not kidding. They only license about one surveyor a year. I'm not making this up.
And all licenses are even, I think there's only about.
A lot of people my age and over have filled, because it was $25 in the first.
That's right. Now you need a 48 degree.
Right, so I'm just putting it up.
Any other question?
Anyone from the board have any questions on Mr. Vince? Anyone from the audience have any questions in the testimony given by Mr. Vince? Questions?
I appreciate this discussion. I talk about the water, we tend to come.
Milton, Milton was on the planning board for many years, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Just wanna add that we did, and I believe this, this was in our packets of information we submitted to town, we did apply for review by the Southern 10th End Board, and, and they had no issues with the project. And so if there's no further questions to our experts, I would submit that this variance application would be approved for the reasons testified.
So if we approve this, what's your time for?
I do pretty quickly. I know the, the types of many conversations with the insurance company, they want to get this done. And I know that the homeowners also want to get this done. It, it, it costs, obviously, it's a, it's an issue. We wanna take down the house. We didn't wanna demo the house, because you're really exposing the foundation more. So that's part of why we wanna, we wanna get this approved. We could start the demo, we can start the rebuild. And it should happen pretty quickly. Our builders have to be here with us tonight. We have a builder, we have the insurance carrier, we have the homeowners. Everyone's ready to go.
And the money's ready?
It's out.
Everything's ready.
Sure.
I think we should probably make sure we get into the normalization that the demo happens before.
We don't have to wait until 45?
Exactly.
Yeah.
I'll just get the, for, for proof.
I'm suggesting to your others is that maybe even be a condition that it be done prior, because.
Yeah, it's time.
We haven't applied for permits yet, have we?
No, we have not applied.
Yeah, I know. I was just gonna say, because it's not a week from us, so we've got that timeframe.
Yeah, we have to get permits. We wanna do it right so that we don't damage any, any usable portions of the house as well. So everything's gonna be done in, sort of, so it should.
If we approve tonight, the resolution will be approved till next month, but that doesn't mean you have to wait around for demolition.
I mean, that's at our own risk that no one's gonna appeal the decision of the board.
Yes, it is at your own risk, but.
It's gotta come down anyway.
And here's the state of the foundation.
Yeah, I get it.
No, the point, the point is, it's gonna have to come down one way or another, so I don't see whether it would be objectionable to do that. It's a practical matter.
Right.
Yeah, and if part of the foundation needed to be rebuilt, we'd make sure that, that any, you know, the approval would be, you know, so it, we'll work with the town to get it done as quickly as we can. It's in everyone's interest to get it done.
This is, as I say, this is kinda what the MOU was, you know, the rebuild idea is kind of what the MOU has been treated as, pardon me, to, to just simply be able to rebuild a place. That's a fundamental policy, and that's what you wanna do. So to move that forward is consistent with the purposes of the land use law.
I'm pretty sure that the chairman has been on emails at our, at our client offices as quickly as possible.
Anyone from the audience have any comments?
I, I still haven't heard a timeline. I, I heard him give a, a very eloquent walk around a timeline, but I still haven't heard that there's gonna be an official timeline set. And as the neighbors, I, to be fully honest, so that all of the board is aware, and as the neighbors, I, to be fully honest, so that all of the board is aware, my daughter is seven, she has lived next door to this property, she experienced that night firsthand when she was woken up before the firefighters even got there that night, it has been really traumatic, and I would like to make clear that for us to have to live next to this house for almost a year and a half now has been extremely traumatizing. The parents of the little girl, the mom of the little girl, also lives on Eastern Avenue, and her daughter walks by that house, her other daughter walks by that house every day. I understand that there's a lot of bureaucracy, and I understand that they need to do these applications, but I, and I hear what they're saying about the foundation, I get that they don't want to have to pay for the, for moving in, I understand that it would speed up the process, but I do think there needs to be more urgency towards the actual demolition of this property, and then move towards rebuilding. I live next door, the 3.4, I'm not going to lie, I sat there and debated, is this really towards the public good? On the night of that fire, my car set on fire because my, their house was so close to my property line that my car went on fire, is that truly to the public good? That's a great question, but I agree with the idea that we need to move as quickly as possible to move on, and if we need to keep the foundation in line to do that, that's great, but I still haven't heard a timeline, and I would ask that this board please push harder throughout this process for a clear commitment from the builder and from the attorney who's present here today for clear deadlines that will be set. I understand that there's an appeal process, but it sounds like they could still get a demolition permit in that 45 days, so I would ask these things be considered by the board before you agree to just give them this, this variance, to at least take those things into consideration, and perhaps put those as conditions on the variance.
Just so to record, could you just identify yourself again?
Absolutely, my name is Jennifer Bruder, I live at 133 Eastern Avenue.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any comments?
Just to follow up, if you could keep...
From the record you need?
Oh, sorry, 3 Amalaka, on the 127th Eastern Avenue, if, if you guys could give us a timeline as well, as the direct neighbor, like, like she said, a timeline, and keep us well informed, because this was the first thing we heard, and there's been people walking on our property, I mean, we have, I don't know if they're surveyors, I mean, you introduced yourself, but people have been coming on our property, taking pictures, you know, coming and knocking on our door, what happened, what this, what that.
Insurance...
We just closed on our house a year ago, and that's, that's what we see, people come to visit our house, that's what we see, every day we pull up, it needs to come down, and we need to know when. What's the starting date, when is it happening? And, and it's, and we need to make sure it's not going to affect our house, because I'm putting up brand-new siding.
So there's a permanent process through the town that they're going to have to go to get the demo permit, absolutely, we don't really control that part, definitely can, do we have the ability to put timelines on?
We really can't put a timeline, we can indicate that the board, the board, you know, certainly encourages and does not object to the applicant immediately seeking a demolition permit, you can advise our city, our municipal staff as to that, you would be doing it at your own risk, and that is a significant, that is a significant consideration, ma'am, I have to be candid with you, but this is something that if the applicant really wants to do it, they can do it, the board will certainly not stand in the way.
Are the owners here tonight?
Yes, Sarah Malcolm is here with us tonight.
Okay, so I think you've heard a lot with the neighborhood, we've all endured it for a long, long time, I know it's a risk that you would go and do the demolition permit, but I think you're hearing for resounding, please.
I want to proceed with this as quickly and as soon as possible, I, I, I poured my heart and soul into that house, I, I bought my baby home for the first time into that house, it, it's not just, it's not just the property that we own far away, that this is, this was my first home, so I am so sorry, I, I wish I wasn't here, I know it's not my fault, but I, I can imagine living next to that, and I'm sorry to the town of Somerville, I, I want to move on, I want as quickly to move on from this process, I wanted to move on for a very long time, so if, if my builder says we can demo it and rebuild it, and it's safe to do, and it's safe for my neighborhood, and it's safe for everything that needs to get done, do it, yeah, there's, I will agree to do it as quickly as possible, yes.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? That's your presentation?
That is our presentation, we would ask that the board approve our...
So we'd like to move that we closed a portion of this application?
So, second?
Move the second on the table?
Aye.
Close? Okay, we got it.
I don't see a reason, obviously, we're not from the town, we all wanted to go, we're going to be building a structure, I would assume that the demolition is, that they're not going to run in there with a machine and what they have in the neighborhood, because you want to save the foundation, so it will be a traumatic effect with bulldozers throwing things down, you're not going to have that, but what's this, the waiting time on extermination of the building itself?
All the times now the process is set up here, another, Ms. Malley's whole package, they got to file for rodent certification, cut utilities, and then whatever, anything that the town has.
Or assume utilities are cut.
I can speak to the rodent certification, that was to be the last project, so we're trying to get as much done ahead of time, mitigation.
Bill in the back has a question.
Mr. Singer addressed the rodent certification, and the letters of disconnect from the utility companies were obtained a long time ago, so, we're working towards the process, and we do have things in place already.
And this could be able to stick-by-stick demolition?
It'll be a hand demolition, yes, what you were saying is correct.
Thank you, anyone else? Where are you closing?
We didn't. So I think probably anything we have is do it as, you know, as quickly as possible.
Yeah, we're used to the impetus for that because we're not...
For the normalization.
Yeah, that's, but they can start the demolition and clear the place out without us, you know.
They can do that anticipating the resolution, there's no reason why it couldn't happen.
Right, and he's probably ready to go.
Make a motion that we approve it.
Second?
The only condition we'll have was the presentation of a block plan with regard to leaders and drainage issues, yeah.
We'll meet in the field then.
That's fine. Can we start to build the house before, even if that's, you know, that's part of the CO?
You're not making a condition, have, you know, two or three...
Well, get it done before the CO and stuff, but I'd say, you know...
No, I don't want to do anything, that's what I'm saying, when you're out there, I'm suggesting we just meet in the field, see what works.
That's fine.
Just say it works, okay, and just go do it.
That's pretty good.
Yeah.
Moving second for approval, the second?
I did.
The room's moved to other places.
Chairman there?
Yes.
Is your left?
Yes.
Mr. Tarpinet?
Yes. This one last? Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Golds?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Ready to go, this is the telethon board? Someone like to move, you close? I'm going to go with him.